Are we ready?
Uh, Dave?
Yes.
We're ready.
Okay. So, good morning. This is Saturday, May 2nd, 2015. I'll call the special joint meeting of our elected and appointed officials together, i.e. city council and planning commission. And, um, for the city council, will someone call?
Yes, right here. Councilmember Asher?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Here.
Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Will someone do the same thing with the vice commissioner?
Yes, indeed. Commissioner Cardoza?
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Commissioner Coomerly has an excused absence today. Vice Chair Tan? Vice Chair Tan?
Here.
And Chair Moss?
Here.
Great. So, um, we have a chance to have some substantive discussion today about proposed regulations and set of some guidelines for residential development here in Emeryville. I just want to open and say that this is the start of EPO's Affordable Housing Week and would just like to remind us that all of these discussions that are underway take place on what was sacred native land and I just would like to keep that in mind as we move forward today. Do you want to have any introductory comments?
Um, sure, yeah. I mean, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming on a Saturday, both my, you know, fellow officials and staff for giving up their Saturday and obviously everybody that's here from the public primarily. I'm sure you have better things to do on a sunny day. We obviously have a lot to get through today. These are very important topics and they're going to be, you know, we will be better off by having all of the input, for sure. That we do have a lot to get through, so if you feel that you aren't able to, you know, get out everything that you want to say, then please, you know, please feel welcome to email the council and the commission and staff later on because we definitely do want to hear everything that everybody has to say on these topics.
We will have extensive public comment on each agenda item. However, is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? All right, seen none? Let's just move into the stack overview to set the stage.
All right, thank you, Ruth. And just to kind of clarify, I met before this meeting with the mayor and the chair of the planning commission and we've all agreed that I will facilitate the discussion so the mayor and the vice and the chair don't have to worry about running the meeting. So I just ask everybody to raise your hand if you have something to say and I will call on you. And the same thing goes for the public. A couple of housekeeping items before we get started. Before each commissioner and council member and staff, you have two handouts. One is the PowerPoint presentation, so you can follow along if you like, and the other is the full packet for the meeting, which includes the agenda, the staff report, and the two attachments to the staff report. For the public, out in the link and down in the stairway, we also have these handouts and there's a few extra copies on the desks on either side here. We have the PowerPoint presentation. We also have the packet minus the attachments because they're quite voluminous, just the agenda and the staff report. If you feel you need the full packet with the attachments, we have a couple of extra copies of that. You can also download that from our website. Okay, that's all one word. New Residential Development Rules. There are postcards around that announce this meeting and they have the website listed on it as well. So here is the agenda for the meeting today. We've broken it into two halves. In the morning, we'll be talking about regulations and guidelines for unit mix and family-friendly design and then we'll have a break for lunch. We'll have sandwiches and salads from Ruby's Cafe. There should be plenty for everybody. And then in the afternoon, we'll be talking about incentives for affordable house and ownership housing, including the bonus point system. In both of these two sessions, we'll follow the same format. There will be a staff presentation by me. We'll then have clarifying questions from the commission and council. We'll then open it up to public comment and then we'll bring it back to the commission and council for discussion and deliberation. For the public comment, we have portable microphones on either side. You can just stay in your seat, raise your hand, I'll call on you. Staff will bring you a microphone. And we'd also like to ask you to sign the sign-in sheet if you speak. This is optional, you don't have to, but it helps us to make sure we get your name right and get it spelled right and so forth. So after you speak, staff will then hand you the sign-in sheet. And I do want to acknowledge the staff that are here today that have helped to set this up. Diana Kena was kind of the ringleader and orchestrated all of this. We also have Catherine Furpo, Miradessai, and Sarah Billing is around somewhere. There she is, way in the back. And I believe it's Sarah and Miru will be the ones who will be bringing you the microphones to make your public comments. Restrooms are across the way in the new building. You just push the door open, there's no code. Let's see. A couple of other things for the commission and council. I would like to request that you speak into your microphones so that your, what you say will be picked up on the recording and on the video. And also, I would respectfully request that you hold any questions you may have until after I've gotten through my presentation because we have a lot to cover and I know we're all anxious to get out of here by 2:00 if possible, so it would expedite things if you can hold your questions until I get through it. The staff presentations are kind of lengthy because there's a lot to cover, but I'll do my best to make it as concise as possible. So, before we get started, are there any questions or have I forgotten to mention anything? Okay. So, introduction and overview. This section, I'm just going to briefly touch on Emeryville development patterns, issues that we're going to be addressing, and the tools that are available to address those issues. This is a couple of charts that summarize residential development in Emeryville over the last 20 years. We've done an inventory of all the major residential projects built since 1994 and this gives you what the unit mix breakdown and the tenure breakdown is. In terms of unit mix, it's about 10% studios and 43% one bedrooms, so a little over half one bedroom and studios, 38% two bedrooms, and 5% three or more bedrooms. We also have about 4% live work. So it's about 43% three and two bedrooms and a little over half studios and one bedrooms. In terms of tenure, it's been about 2/3 rental and 1/3 ownership, 1/3 condominiums. This is, shows the total number of units from 2000 to the present time. The 2000 numbers come from the census and then the, actually, the 2014 numbers are also from the census and we interpolated between those two using our own inventory of what was built in each year. So as you can see, the total number of units went from about 4,300 to about 6,500, about a 50% increase in those, that 14-year period. It was pretty flat for the last five years or so, so most of this occurred between 2000 and 2010. The bulk of those units were studios and one bedrooms. Not a lot of three-bedroom units, 300 about in 2000, 400 in 2014, although it has been steadily increasing, but the number is not huge. The council has asked us to address the issues of unit mix, unit size, family-friendly design, affordable housing, ownership housing, and the development bonus system. So we'll be talking about those things today. The first three items will be covered in the morning session and the second three items will be covered in the afternoon session. This is a summary table that tries to capture the tools that we have available to address these issues. So the issues or attributes are listed down the left side here and the tools are listed across the top. We have design guidelines. We have incentives to our development bonus system. We have development impact fees. The city also has a limited amount of affordable housing money that we can use to subsidize affordability in private projects or sponsor our own projects. There's inclusionary zoning without incentives or concessions and that's where a developer is just told, "You must provide X number of affordable units with your project." No ifs, ands, or buts, no concessions or incentives, you just have to do it. There's the state density bonus law, which is something we are required to implement by state law. That also provides a density bonus for providing affordable housing and I'll be talking a little bit more later about how that works. And then finally, we have regulations and requirements, which is just, we write it into the code, you have to do it, right? So in terms of how these different tools relate to these different issues, in terms of unit mix, that's already addressed in our incentive, in our development bonus system. In terms of family-friendly housing, in order to get a bonus for that, they have to be three-bedroom. Oh, also, I should just mention the key to this chart. Thumbs up means we've already done it or it's in the process. Check mark highlighted means this is something we should be looking at and those are highlighted because that's the main, going to be the main focus of what we talk about today. Thumbs up and check mark means we've already done it, but we could consider improving upon it. And X just means that you can't do it. It's basically illegal. So in terms of the unit mix, we have that already in our development bonus system, as I said, for family-friendly, but it's something we could consider embellishing or elaborating on if we wish. And, we can also require this. The city attorney has advised that this is a legitimate use of the city's police power. We can legislate that a certain percent of units must be two or three-bedroom or whatever. In terms of family-friendly design, we have design guidelines. I'll be touching on those briefly, not spending a lot of time on that today though because that's on a parallel track. These were approved by the planning commission at their last meeting on April 23rd and they'll be coming to the council for consideration at your May 19th meeting. In terms of incentives and bonuses, again, we do have a bonus for family-friendly housing. We could elaborate on that if we want to and we can also require that. We can require that a certain number or all units be designed to be family-friendly in conformance with our guidelines. In terms of general residential amenities, this would be for all residential development, not just family development. We have design guidelines for that, that's included in our design guidelines. We can also require that residential projects comply with those guidelines if we wish to. In terms of affordable housing, we've broken that down by rental and condominium because the tools for the two are somewhat different. For both of them, we could have incentive bonus system and that's going to be a main focus of the afternoon session, is how can we provide incentives to have people provide more affordable and/or ownership housing. We also have a development impact fee for rental housing, which was just adopted last year. In terms of city subsidies, we do have some limited amount of subsidy available for both rental and condominium projects. We have a first-time homebuyers program. We also have subsidized or sponsored our own projects, such as the Ambassador Housing Project and 3706 San Pablo Avenue. In terms of inclusionary, without incentives or concessions, this is now prohibited for rental housing. We cannot do that anymore. There was a court case that said it's illegal, it's tantamount to rent control, so it's not a tool that's available anymore, which is why we have to look at incentives. The state density bonus law, however, is available for both rental and condominium. Oh, I should also mention, inclusionary zoning is still allowed and we do still have it for condominium projects because that's not considered rent control. And then finally, for ownership housing, we could figure, try to figure out a way to incentivize that, but the city attorney has advised that it, we are not legally allowed to legislate the ownership type of projects. We can't dictate that projects must be condominiums versus rental. So those are the tools that we have available. Now to get into the substance of it, the first half of the meeting or the morning session, this is on family-friendly housing. We're talking about demographic mix, enrollment levels in the school district, unit mix, unit size, family-friendly design guidelines briefly, and then finally wrapping up with the discussion questions that we would like feedback from the commission and council on. I want to lead off just by saying that it's been said on a number of occasions that the reason we want to attract more families to Emeryville is to have a more interesting demographic mix, have more families than we have now, have more children than we have now, and also to help the Emery Unified School District with their enrollment levels. So I'll be addressing both of those issues. In terms of the characteristics of Emeryville's households, we've looked at the most recent census data and we've compared Emeryville to some of the surrounding cities, including San Francisco, to the county, to the Bay Area, to California, and to the nation. And we looked at average household size, the percent of single-person households, the percent of households that are families with children, and the percent of residents who are schoolkids, basically, people who are enrolled in grades K through 12. And as this shows, Emeryville is very different from all of the other places we compare ourselves to. Average household size is only 1.7, everybody else is more than 2% single persons, we're at more than half, and all the other comparators are a quarter to a third or even 11% in Piedmont. Families with children is about 1/8 of our population, 12.5%. Other places are quite a bit higher, up to 30% as a national average. And then students enrolled in public, or not public, but students enrolled in school, grade K through 12, it's about 6% of our population. National average is almost three times that much. So, that's just what we are, right? Those are our characteristics. In terms of dwelling units, again, you're looking at the same other geographical areas. We looked at average number of bedrooms per unit, average percent of studio and one-bedroom units, average percent of units that are two or more bedrooms, average number of units that are three or more bedrooms, and units that are in buildings that have 10 or more units. In other words, big apartments and condominium buildings. Again, Emeryville stands out quite different from everybody else. We have 1.34 bedrooms per unit compared to, most other places have more than that. The only one that has less than two is San Francisco at 1.86. Almost 2/3 of our units are studios and one bedrooms, as compared with everybody else. Piedmont, of course, stands out at the other end at less than 5%. About 38% of our units are 38, are two or more bedroom and only 7% are three or more bedroom, compared to the national average of 60%. We also have 71% of our units in buildings of 10 units or more. And if you notice, that is twice as high as the next highest one, which is San Francisco at 35%. This number here is significant. And I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about that because I think this goes a long way to explaining our demographic mix and the characteristics of our units, that we have so many units in big buildings. So just to briefly talk about the development history of Emeryville, how did we get to be the way we are? This map is from 1878. It's 20 years before the city was incorporated, but basically when we were incorporated, it looked like this. We had a big racetrack, we had an amusement park, a steel mill, a paint plant, we had slaughterhouses up in the north end of town. Joseph Memory had his mansion on San Pablo. But there were fewer than 1,000 people. There were a couple of hundred people living in Emeryville at this time. And there were no residential neighborhoods. There were a few mansions like Joseph Memory's and a lot of people lived in hotels. Some people lived in hotels in Butcher Town and along Park Avenue, but there weren't very many people in Emeryville at that time. In the 20th century, cities started to develop. The older residential neighborhoods on the east side of town, the Triangle and the Doyle Street neighborhoods developed, starting in around 1910 or so. And then the rest of the city was big steel mills and electroplating plants and like Liquid Sugar here with rail spurs all over the, all over the city. So most of the city was this big, large-scale industrial stuff with these two residential neighborhoods on the east side. Then, and it stayed that way for the first 2/3 of the 20th century. Then in the 1970s, things began to change. The city built the peninsula out into the bay and decided to build, well, it wasn't the city that built it, but a private developer built the Watergate Apartments, which later became condominiums, 1,249 units in a single project, by far the largest residential development that had ever taken place in Emeryville. And also, high-rise office buildings on the peninsula. And then in the 1980s, the Pacific Park Plaza condominiums were built, that's almost 600 units. Between Watergate and PPP, that's 1,800 units almost, which is still about more than a quarter of the city's housing stock is in these two projects. Then in the 80s and the 90s and the early 2000s, as the, as the industrial developments went away, they left behind these very large parcels, which lent themselves to very large-scale developments, either commercial or residential. So we got things like Novartis and Pixar. And then on the residential side, the old Ryerson Steel Mill was replaced by a 330-unit apartment building called The Courtyards. And then the rail spur, one of the rail spurs became our Greenway, which is a great asset. And then there are fairly large-scale residential developments on either side of that. This is, the old Liquid Sugar became the Liquid Sugar condominiums. Also, some of the old industrial buildings were kept and were converted to other uses, both non-residential and residential. The Grove Valve Building was converted into the Emery Tech Office Building, where Cliff Bar is located today. And the Emeryville Warehouse was converted to Emeryville Warehouse Lofts, which is now 1,500 Park Avenue, which I'm sure you're familiar with. So, it's kind of a mix of stuff, but I think the common thread through all of this is this is all just really large, really large sites and large buildings. This is what Emeryville's population looks like since it was incorporated. Here's 1890, fewer than, you know, a couple hundred people. It increased in 1910 up to about 2,600. This is when the eastern residential neighborhoods were built and it stayed at that level for seven decades, about 2,500 people until 1970. Then this is when Watergate was built and Pacific Park Plaza was built in the 80s and then we've had continuous development since then. But I think it's important to note that virtually all of this development that happened since 1970 was in large buildings that had 10 or more units and the smaller buildings were built earlier. So we wanted to see if these large buildings could help to explain our demographic and our housing characteristics. So we did what's called a regression analysis, where we looked at all of the census tracts in the Bay Area, of which there are almost 1,600. And just, if you're not familiar with a regression analysis, I'm just going to do a quick primer on that because I'm going to rely on that a lot through the rest of the presentation today, so it's important to understand it. You've probably seen these kind of charts before. This shows, this, you take, in regression analysis, you're taking two variables and trying to see if they're, if they appear to be related to each other. In this particular example, along the X-axis here, we have the percent of units that are in 10 or more unit buildings. How many of the units in a particular census tract are in big buildings? And then on the Y-axis, in this particular example, we're looking at units that are three or more bedrooms. So what percent of total units are three or more bedrooms? And for each census tract, we take the percent of units in 10 or more unit buildings and the percent of units in three or more, of three or more bedrooms, and we plot that point. So each of these blue dots represents one census tract. You then draw what's called a trend line, which is the closest fit line through the data, and the computer figures this all out, you know, you push a button and the computer draws the trend line, right? So that's the trend line. And you also can calculate what's called a correlation coefficient. The correlation coefficient varies from 0 to 1. If it's 0, that means there's absolutely no relationship between these two variables. The dots are just random, all over the place. If the correlation coefficient is 1, then that means the dots fall on a straight line. So it's perfect correlation. You're never going to have either 0 or 1, it's always going to be somewhere in between. If the relationship is negative, as it is in this case, then it's usually expressed as a negative number between 0 and 1. That means that as one variable increases, the other one decreases. There's no hard and fast rule about what constitutes a definitive correlation, it's just a matter of degree. So something like .7, .8, .9 would be a really high correlation. Something around .1 or .2 would be a kind of a weak correlation. This particular one that we're looking at is negative .53. That's a reasonably, reasonably good correlation. What this shows is that there is definitely a relationship between the number of units or the percent of units that are in large buildings as opposed to the percent of three or more bedroom units that you could expect. And notice that Emeryville is right on the trend line. So what this says is that if you have 71% of your units in 10 or more unit buildings, as we do, you would be expected to have about 7% three-bedroom units. Actually, you can't see it here because it's so small, but the actual number is 6.5%. We would be expected to have 6.5%, we actually have 7. So we actually have a little bit more than would be predicted. So we did this for all of the different variables, household and dwelling unit variables. This summarizes it. Here's the correlation coefficient for each one. These are all against 10-plus unit buildings, okay? Some, the correlation is higher than others. You can see for studio and one bedrooms and two or more bedrooms, the correlation is pretty high. And that would predict that Emeryville should have about 58% studio and one bedrooms. We have 61. It's a little bit more than, than we supposedly should, but it's pretty close. So for all of these, it really appears that much of our demographic and housing unit mix can be explained by the fact that we have so many big buildings. One I want to focus on in particular is families with children. So that correlation is not particularly high, but the analysis says we should have about 17.9%. We actually have 12.5%. This is the chart for that. It's not in your staff report, but I wanted to, I wanted to just focus on it for a minute. You can see the trend line is not real steep, so it doesn't vary a whole lot with 10 or more unit buildings. And the correlation is not particularly high. In this case, Emeryville is below the trend line. We should be up here around 17, 18% according to this. I just want to point out a couple of things. Some people have said that in order to get families with children, you have to have single-family homes with backyards, or you have to have, you know, Brooklyn Heights-style brownstone buildings or something like that. Certainly, that would lend itself to families with children, but the presence of a lot of large apartment and condominiums, on the other hand, it should not be a deterrent to getting families with children. As you can see, there are a number of census tracts in the Bay Area that have even more large buildings than Emeryville has that are up in the 20% to 30% range of families with children. So it's possible. So the conclusion from this analysis is, first, Emeryville's household and dwelling unit characteristics can be explained by the historical development patterns. Specifically, these characteristics are largely due to the very high percentage of units that we have in large apartment and condominium buildings. And the high percentage of large residential buildings should not be a deterrent to attracting more families with children. All right, now I want to move on to the Emeryville, Emery Unified School District enrollment levels. And I would say, just to note, that a lot of the information for this came from a report that was commissioned by the school district in 2008. That report is attachment one to your staff report. It was by, I'm not sure how to pronounce their names, Lapkoff and Gobalay or Laptoff and Goballett?
Laptoff and Gobalay.
And Gobalay? Okay, thank you. Anyway, they did this report in 2008 and a lot of this data comes from that. It also, I also collected some data from the State Department of Education, which has a lot of data available on their websites. So this shows school district enrollments from 1981 to the present time. The blue line is the total enrollment. There, as you can see, there was a big spike in the late 1990s and then it came back down again. The consultants were hard-pressed to explain this. They said it could have been because of an influx of inter-district transfers or bad record-keeping. It's possible that the data before this time didn't include inter-district transfers and was only Emeryville residents and if you included inter-district transfers, it might have been up here, but, so I don't really know why this spike was and neither does, neither did the consultants know. But at any rate, assuming that this data does include both inter-district transfers and Emeryville residents, you can see it started at about 681 and we're up at a little under 700 today. It's varied quite a bit. At one point, it was almost 1,000. The green line represents Emeryville residents and the red line are inter-district transfers. That data's not available before 2000, so that's why it's only charted after 2000. This shows that Emeryville residents around 2000 was about 600 in the schools and then that dropped to about 400 and it's been holding pretty steady at about 400 since that time. Inter-district transfers are a little more variable. They kind of go up and down. They, at various times, they've been higher or lower than the number of residents in the schools. In this, just this past school year, we had a drop in the total enrollment. Even though there was an increase in resident enrollment, that was more than offset by a drop in inter-district transfers, which could be explained because of the move of the high school to the Santa Fe School in Oakland. This is a similar chart that just breaks it down by grade level. So the light blue line is K through 8, which today would be Anna Yates. In past years, that would have also included the Ralph Hawley Middle School. And the purple line at the bottom is the high school. So, back in So back in '81, '82, the high school accounted for almost half, about 45%, I think, of the total enrollment. And today, it's about a little over a quarter of the total enrollment. The K through 8 enrollments have increased from about 350 to about 500 today, and the high school has been declining from about 300 to a little under 200 today. The consultants did forecasts of future enrollment levels in the school district, and that, again, was done in 2008. These are their various forecasts using various assumptions. And they also calculated what they called a medium forecast, which is this red line here, which is what they would expect if they averaged all their forecasts together. And we have, since we're about halfway through the forecast period, which went out to 2020, we have actual data now of what the enrollment levels were between 2008 and 2014. So we've superimposed that on this chart. And as you can see, the actual enrollments have been below all of the forecasts except for this one down here. Again, they've been holding steady, and these are just residents. This is not inter-district transfers. This is just Emeryville residents. It's been holding pretty steady at around 400. One thing that consultants noted is that the importance of test scores, the API, something Performance Index, Academic Performance Index, right, thank you. And these are calculated throughout California for all of the various school districts. This chart shows the school districts in Alameda County from, for the last 12 years, from 2002 to 2013, which is the most recent data that's available. Emeryville is the red line. It's down at the bottom. We've been vying with Oakland and Hayward for last place for the last 12 years. And in 2013, we were in a virtual dead heat for, for the last place. We're actually slightly ahead. Emeryville has 722 points, and Oakland and Hayward each had 721. But I would also note that the scores in Emeryville have been improving at a faster pace than almost any other school district. So we have been, the scores have been getting better. Unfortunately, all the other school district scores have been getting better too, so we're still at the bottom, but we're, we're gaining. I highlighted here in green San Leandro, because the consultants make the point that if we want to expect any kind of an increase in school district enrollments in the future, we need to get the test scores above San Leandro. So as you can see, we've gotten pretty close in a few years, but if we can just bump it up above San Leandro and be in this range here, the consultants indicate that would help us get more students in the schools. Of course, Piedmont is up here at the top. This is what's preferred as a high-performing district. And, you know, there's other Pleasanton and other cities like that. Berkeley is, is right here in the middle. I've been hearing for years that we need to produce more three-bedroom units in order to attract more families with children to Emeryville, in order to get more school kids in Emeryville, in order to increase school district enrollments. This slide is just kind of a reality check on that. There is some truth to that, but it's more complicated than that. This is, shows data from 1990 census, 2000 census, and 2013 census, American Community Survey, compared to actual school district enrollment data for the same years. As you can see, the number of families with children in Emeryville has been increasing quite a bit over that period. The number of three-bedroom units, again, not a huge number, but the number has been increasing from 1990 to 2000 to 2013. The number of residents who are enrolled in school in Emeryville has also been increasing. That's shown here. And the school district enrollment levels did increase quite a bit from 1990 to 2000, but then, for whatever reason, they've dropped again from 2000 to 2013 by this level. So they paralleled the increase in families with children between 1990 and 2000, but they went in exactly the opposite direction for the last 13 years. So I don't know how to explain this other than to say there's clearly not a direct relationship between these things. Now, one thing that's been said is that you can attract more families with children to Emeryville, but if the units are not affordable, the kids are most likely going to end up going to private schools. And maybe that's why the school district enrollments have dropped, even while families with children have increased. The census gives us data about school enrollment, and it breaks it down by both private and public schools. So I looked at that and looked, compared Emeryville to other cities and found that Emeryville has about 11% of its kids in private schools, which is the same as Oakland. And it's comparable to the Bay Area and the county and the state and the nation, and is certainly much lower than Berkeley, where 21% of kids attend private schools, and San Francisco, where 25% of kids attend private schools. But if you look at the census data for kids attending public schools, and you compare that to the number of kids enrolled, Emeryville resident kids enrolled in Emeryville schools, there's a huge gap. And what that suggests is a breakdown like this, which is that we have about 11% of our kids in private school, about 58% of them attend Emery Unified School District, and about 31% are attending public schools, but not in Emeryville. So it appears that there's a good chunk of kids who are transferring out to other school districts, such as Oakland and Berkeley, maybe charter schools, maybe like my kids who lived in Oakland but transferred to Berkeley to go to Berkeley High School, whatever. I don't know how to explain this, but it's an issue that, that we need to think about if we're going to try to think about increasing Emeryville school district enrollments. So the conclusion of, of the consultants, to increase Emery Unified School District enrollments, the school district needs to increase the test scores so they're at least above San Leandro. They also need to offer programs to increase the attractiveness of the school district. They didn't specify what those programs are, but, you know, something.
Like the fall.
They didn't say, but could be. And meanwhile, the city needs to increase park space, which, you know, we have a shortage of park space. We're trying to address that. We have a general plan, and we have a Parks and Rec strategic plan that, that tries to get more park space. Certainly, the Sherwin-Williams project is going to provide a lot more park space. If we can ever get PG&E to go away, we'll have a nice big site for a Central Park. Anyway, we're working on that. Providing family-friendly neighborhood shopping, which the general plan does call for four neighborhood centers, which are intended to be local-serving, bicycle and pedestrian-oriented, so hopefully that would be attractive to families as those develop. We need to provide more programs for youth, which of course, Community Services is doing in partnership with the school district through all of their recreation programs and ECDC. And we need to provide more family-friendly housing. So family-friendly housing is definitely a part of this mix, but it's not the whole thing. It's part of a larger strategy that includes all this other stuff. So to get to unit mix, we need, if we're going to write regulations, we need to have some numbers. And in order, you can't just pull numbers out of the air. You have to have some basis for the numbers that you arrived at. The, the consultants for the school district didn't really look at two and three-bedroom units, or even square footage of units, or anything like that. What they looked at is something called student yield. And student yield is the number of students that would be expected to be produced per, per dwelling unit. So .07, for example, .07 to .08, which is the current level of student yield, is, means about seven to eight students per 100 dwelling units. For each of their forecasts, the consultants had three different alternatives, which they called zero, one, and two. Alternative zero is no change, and that's a yield of .07 to .08. Alternative one is where the test scores get up above San Leandro, Hayward, and Oakland. And that, they would say, a student yield of about .11 could be anticipated. Alternative two is where the test scores are similar to those of the high-performing districts such as Piedmont, which is probably not realistic to expect, at least in, in the near future. And that would result in student yields of .18 to .19. Now, comparing these numbers to the current student yield, the alternative one is a 60% increase roughly, and alternative two is about 100 to 140% increase. We know we have 12.5% families with children now. If we increase that by 60%, as alternative one would suggest, that would suggest we should have about 20% families with children. And if we increase it by the alternative two amounts, that would suggest 25 to 30% families with children. Staff feels that this level is probably not attainable, at least anytime soon. This level here, 20% families with children, is probably realistic, and perhaps we should focus on that. And in order to take a look at that and see how that relates to bedrooms, bedroom count, first, we wanted to just confirm that there in fact is a relationship between bedroom count and families with children. It seems intuitive that there would be. So we did this regression analysis for all the census tracts in the Bay Area on average bedrooms per unit versus families with children. And it does show a moderate correlation of about .32. As number of bedrooms increases, on average, the percent of families with children, of course, also increases. Emeryville is a little below the trend line here. This would suggest if we want 20% families with children, we need about, an average of about 1.5 bedrooms per unit. Now, looking specifically at two and three-bedroom units, this is the chart for two or more bedrooms. So it includes two and three and four and five bedroom units, anything with two or more bedrooms. The correlation there is .33, which is a fairly decent correlation. And what this suggests is if we, we're down here now. If we want 20% families with children here, there, you go across to the trend line here, and then you drop that down to the, to the X-axis, and that suggests you need about 50% two or more bedroom units to get 20% families with children. We also looked at three or more bedroom units. The correlation, as you can see here, is not quite as strong, but there is a correlation, apparently. We would suggest that both two and three-bedroom units are important to look at for family-friendly housing. A lot of families don't need three bedrooms. They may not be able to afford three bedrooms. You have single parents with one kid, or even a couple with one kid, or even a couple with two kids, if they're little kids, or if they're of the same gender, could share a bedroom, might not be able to afford a three-bedroom unit. So we think it's important to look at both. But in terms of the three-bedroom units, to do the same thing, 20% families with children, take that across to the trend line and drop it down to the X-axis, and that gives you 10%. So what this suggests is 10% three or more bedroom units and 50% two or more bedroom units in order to achieve 20% families with children. So this summarizes that. That's this line right here. We also looked at 25 and 30% families with children, and that gives you, of course, higher percentages of two and three-bedroom units down here. And our current numbers are here in the first line. I want to point out one thing, though. The 50% two or more bedroom units includes the 10% three or more bedroom units, because two or more bedrooms includes three or more bedrooms, right? So you don't add these together and get 60%. This could be 40% two-bedroom and 10% three-bedroom would, would meet these numbers. Okay? So that's, that's the numbers we've arrived at from that analysis for two and three-bedroom units. In terms of unit size, I'm afraid staff does not have any real firm recommendations for you. We looked at the buildings built in the last 20 years, the ones I summarized at the beginning of the presentation, and this is the average unit sizes for those buildings. In the Family Friendly Design Guidelines that were presented to the Planning Commission in February, we suggested a minimum two-bedroom size of 900 square feet and three-bedroom size of 1,100 square feet. One of the speakers at that meeting said that these numbers were higher than affordable housing funders like to see, and it might be difficult to get funding for affordable housing if you require a minimum size of that. So in the, in the April guidelines that were just recently adopted or approved by the Planning Commission, we've dropped a minimum size, but we do have example units. We have undesirable examples and desirable examples, and we do have square footages for those. These are the undesirable examples, and they're not undesirable because of the size of the units. They're undesirable for other reasons, but this is, this is how the numbers shake out for those. And these are the numbers for the desirable units. I would suggest that compliance with the Family Friendly Design Guidelines is kind of going to be a de facto minimum unit size, because you're going to have to have a certain size living room, a certain size dining room, wide hallways for the kids to play, things like that. You're going to end up with a certain minimum size, even if you don't say what that number is. Santa Cruz does have minimum sizes for their affordable housing, and as you can see, these are the numbers down here. They are lower than what we suggested in our February guidelines. They're also considerably lower than the average size of units that have been developed over the last 20 years. So we don't know that minimum unit size is necessarily needed. We sort of feel like if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's, it hasn't really been a problem in search of a solution. But if the commission and council feel that we need to establish minimum unit sizes by all means, we can certainly look at that further. Now, just to touch briefly on the Family Friendly Design Guidelines, as I said, these are in the works. They're on a parallel track. We have, they have been approved by the Planning Commission. They'll be coming to the council for approval on May 19th. Actually, that's just, that's what these things say, so I won't belabor that. I just want to, just give you a brief summary, just so you have the context of what the Family Friendly Design Guidelines are all about. The design guidelines actually have both for all residential projects as well as for family-friendly projects. And in both categories, they have site and building design guidelines as well as individual unit design guidelines. I'm just going to show you some examples of a few of those guidelines. This is by no means all of them. There are quite a few more. So for family-friendly, for site and building design, we have provide units with two, three or more bedrooms. That seems intuitive. Provide ample exterior play areas that are visible from the units. And provide in-unit laundries or common laundry areas where people can gather. For the unit designs, one of the key points is provide only one master suite. You don't want multiple master suites in a family unit. Separate the living areas from the, sleeping areas from the living areas. The dining and living areas should both have ample room for all household members to gather, and there should be hallways wide enough for children to play. The guidelines include a number of illustrations. I've just shown a couple of them here of an undesirable unit and a desirable unit. This is an example, these are both two-bedroom. This is an example of an undesirable one. As you can see, it has two master suites. The bedroom enters directly from the living area. There's no foyer. The front door enters directly into the kitchen. There's no hallway. There's no balcony. The dining room is, dining table is cramped, and it blocks access to the living area. There is no play or study area, et cetera, et cetera. This is an example of a more desirable unit. It has one master suite and then a separate bedroom with a separate bath across the hall. There's a wide hallway here where children can play. The, there's an entrance foyer, so you have a transition space, and there's storage in the foyer for strollers and things like that. The dining and living areas are separated, and although there's no wall between them, they, each of them is large enough for the entire family to gather. There is a balcony out here, and so forth. So those are just quick comparisons of undesirable and desirable in terms of family-friendly. So that covers it. And now we have some questions that we'd like the commission and council to discuss. First, should a minimum percentage of two or more bedroom and/or three or more bedrooms be required in new multi-unit residential development? And if so, what should that percentage be? Staff has made a recommendation on that. Should two or more bedroom units, including three or more bedroom units, be required to comply with the Family Friendly Design Guidelines? If so, should that requirement only apply to the units that are actually required? Or should it also apply to any additional units that the developer may choose to provide? In other words, if the developer meets their requirement for two and three-bedroom units that are family-friendly, could they be allowed to provide some additional two-bedroom units that maybe are not family-friendly, that maybe have two master suites if they, if they want to, as long as they've met their family-friendly requirement? So that's a question for you. Should we have minimum unit sizes? And if so, what should they be? Should there be any exceptions to these requirements? And if so, what should be the basis for such an exception? Those are our discussion questions. And at this point, I would like to open it to the commission and council for any clarifying questions you may have.
Is there going to be a chance for the public to ask questions?
Yes, there will.
When will that be?
After the commission and council's clarifying questions.
Charlie, just to frame the discussion, I know you have provided the staff recommendations, but very briefly, can you go, or can you either put up there or go down the list, the staff recommendations? The Planning Commission and the staff has spent an enormous amount of time on this issue, and you've done an awful lot of the scut work, some really hard work. It would help me if we, if we had your recommendations up there, just to frame the discussion.
Okay.
This is what you have arrived at after many months and much intensive work. So let's, let's get a sense of that, what the staff recommendations.
Well, in terms of mix, we would recommend 50% two or more bedroom units, which would include 10 or more three-bedroom units, 10% or more three-bedroom units. We don't have a recommendation on minimum unit sizes. The Family Friendly Guidelines are in process. You can certainly... You can certainly, we would, I would say, I mean, we didn't say this in the staff report, but I would say we would recommend that these 50% and 10% units be required to comply with the family-friendly guidelines. As I say, we don't have a recommendation on minimum unit size, the family-friendly guidelines are in process, and, okay, whoops. In terms of the exceptions, I would say staff is agnostic about that. I mean, I personally can't think of any justification for any exceptions, but developers always come up with reasons why they can't do these things, and there may be some legitimate reason why a developer should not be held to these requirements, but I personally, I can't think of what that would be.
Charlie, what about a process to, not saying that exceptions are going to be made, but at least a process for people who are looking for exceptions to follow?
Well, we could certainly establish a conditional use permit to allow exceptions to these requirements with the finding that the Planning Commission or Council, as the case may be, must be convinced that it's legitimate, you know? That the developer has made a convincing case as to why they shouldn't be held to these. We can write that in, if that's the pleasure of the Commission and Council. And it doesn't have to be real specific. It just says that they have to prove their case. They have to prove their case, right? We could include that if you wish. Any other questions? Yes, Scott.
This is a question about parcel size. I noticed you have not looked at that as an issue, but, you know, it seems to me that it's true that the bigger the building, we tend to get less family-friendly units by the nature of the structures.
Currently.
Currently, yes, we could address that. But is there also a relationship between parcel size and family-friendly or family housing? For example, in the development world, there are less developers who are capable of doing large projects, and in effect, you have less competition to approach a particular site. The marketplace is smaller inherently, the bigger it is. Should the city look at parcel size in relation to this issue? We had smaller parcels, you know, this is a question really for experts more than myself, but, you know, just looking at it from a bird's eye view, maybe that could affect this, and maybe something about our zoning might be addressed about this.
Well, that's certainly something to consider. I mean, the census doesn't provide data on parcel size, so you have to kind of back into it, but I think it's reasonable to assume that a 10 or more unit building is probably going to be on a bigger parcel than a single-family home, for example. So you could use number of units in a structure sort of as a surrogate for parcel size, but we don't have that, we don't have data on parcel sizes themselves. But that's something that could be considered. Any other questions from the Commissioner and Council? Sean?
I, um...
And then Gail?
I was a little puzzled, as I think you were too, by the pie chart about enrollment in the school district, and I was trying to account kind of for the third, you know, the almost a third of Emeryville children that were enrolled in public school but not here. I was wondering if that would include children who were homeschooled, like, is that considered a public school? Or, and maybe also children that were, for one reason or another, couldn't be accounted for and, you know, enrolled anywhere, kind of thing?
Perhaps, I don't know. I mean, the Census Bureau, they break down the enrollment in schools all kinds of different ways, but one of the categories is not homeschooled. I didn't see that in any of the census data, so I don't know how they count homeschool kids. I would, they probably, well, I don't know, I would think they would consider that public, but I'm not sure. Do you know, Jack?
Some people have to sign up through a district in order to...
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah, some people have to sign up through a district in order to be certified to do homeschooling. The other thing, I'm asking about the pie chart as well, Sean, thinking about this, it would be useful to know the age breakdown and where we start getting attrition in terms of people turning to other, turning outside of the district to enroll their kids.
I can try to figure that out.
Right, because, I mean, we can look at EUSD and the current enrollment numbers, and certainly we have a larger population of folks in K through 5, and then we see lower and lower yields as people move up through the grades. So I would actually suspect that this has to do with not just API scores, but also programming and critical mass, because when kids are in middle school, if you don't have enough kids for softball team, or for electives, right, people will start turning away from the district. And we do have a lot more programming for the lower grades than we do for the higher ones. So that would be interesting to me to know if that's in fact true.
Okay.
If it's, what we're seeing is that families with older children are looking outside of the district, but still at public school.
Okay, I can try to see if I can extract that from the data. Gail, you had a question?
Well, my question was along those lines, too, and I was wondering if there's age data when the census does those figures, whether they're looking at kids five and over, or is it that we have a lot of young families that have kids, and they're listed as having kids when the kids are one, two, three years old, and then they move out?
These are, this is not based on age, this is based on the grade that the students are enrolled in.
Okay.
So it has, how many residents of Emeryville are enrolled in grades K through, you know, five or whatever, regardless of how old they may be.
But does that also track when you're looking at the total number of families with children? So is our 12% by that pie chart?
Well, it's similar data, but it's not exactly the same data. I mean, the number of kids under 18 and the number of kids enrolled in school may be a little bit different, because some of the kids under 18 may not be enrolled in school, some of the kids over, some of the kids enrolled in school may be over 18. But the data I looked at was specifically about kids enrolled in school, regardless of age. So I think Kyrie had a question, and then Ruth?
I was just wanting to suggest that you check with Shelley Lapkoff, because I know that she's studied that exact question for San Francisco Unified School District, who I'd worked with her 10 years ago.
That's the Lapkoff of Lapkoff and Go-...
Yes, and so she would, I remember from reading that demographic study that she did 11 years ago, that it was definitely something that you saw in San Francisco specifically, that in middle school, that's when they were exiting the district. So I would check with her.
Okay. Ruth?
This wasn't exactly asked, but I would be interested to know if there are preschoolers and so families that are just starting out, and by the time they hit public school, maybe they move or they make other choices. So it'd be good to know how many zero through H4 or 5 children live in Emeryville specifically, and then to see if the parents are making some kind of choices once school starts.
Right. The census data does include preschool, it also includes college. I only looked at K through 12, because that's what Emory Unified School District has. We can get data on how many kids in Emeryville are enrolled in preschool. I'm not quite sure what to do with that number, but we can certainly get it. Any further questions from the Commission and Council? Brad?
I mean, in looking at these trends, I guess the question comes to mind, it seems like we're in a little bit of a catch-22, and that the only way to really move forward is this sort of incremental movement. And I'm wondering if there's any analysis that we can do to look into means that might buck the trend, whether that's alternative pedagogy, or, you know, I mean, maybe we're already starting down that path with the ECO, but, you know, if we're just dependent upon little incremental changes to try to get a little bit better than San Leandro, then, you know, it feels a little helpless. And so I'm just wondering if, are there big-picture sort of moves that we could make that might help buck the trend and give us a competitive advantage in that regard? So I just...
In terms of school district enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's really a question for Shelley Lapkoff, probably, and those consultants.
Sure.
I mean, they said programs to increase the school district's attractiveness, but they didn't say what that is. So I'm sure they would have ideas about that. Yes, Jack?
A couple of things that I have been thinking about or want to consider, I, it was really interesting to me, I think it was page maybe 19, that...
Of the PowerPoint?
Of the staff report.
Oh, okay, okay.
Where you talk about, this chart illustrates that in general, the percentage of families with children is likely to increase as the percentage of units with two or more bedrooms increases to about 36% when all units have two or more bedrooms. I think that one, oh, I'm sorry, so that we see an increase in families with children when you have two or more bedrooms in multifamily units. I think one of the things that's happening there is that you achieve a kind of critical mass at which it feels visibly family-friendly to people, that they're around other families. And this is something that the school district, in terms of the numbers, right, I think actually there will be, there could be or will be a point at which, when you achieve that critical mass, right, so a group of parents or a cohort willing to make the jump from fifth grade to sixth grade, right, that then things will start trending very differently, right? But it takes, it takes a large base and population of students to work with, it takes the buildup of community and programs, really at the fifth grade level, for people to kind of make that jump and make that commitment. And so I think that the school district is, in some ways, this same kind of logic would operate there. Once people start seeing that you have enough of, enough families to constitute a cohort and to move up together, then we'll start seeing a difference in the schools. And really, I mean, the API scores, they just, they track, map directly onto SES, onto social, you know, economic status. This is why Piedmont, right, I mean, it's just tracking wealth, right? And we serve a lot of high-needs students in our district. So you have to have folks who, in some ways, are, the folks who are super concerned about the API scores, I don't, I don't know, will also be considering private schools for a lot of reasons. So API matters, but I also think programming matters and critical mass matters.
Nora, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to kind of round the discussion here. We are the Planning Commission and the City Council, and we have a definitive task before us, you know, established by law. We certainly, all of us, have worked in various capacities to aid and assist the school district, and we work with them closely. But when I look at this, we could spend a lot of time talking about the school district and how to get the APIs up and how to enhance the school district so people would come. I believe that our function here is to provide the infrastructure, not set it aside from the school district. We, as the Planning Commission and the City Council, have the ability to provide the basic infrastructure to attract families. Not to say that families are going to fill all these units, we all know about the grad students, five and six of them splitting the rent, but at least we're providing the infrastructure. So I would hope as the discussion continues, we focus more on what these two bodies can do and how we can do it in an effective manner and in a reasonably timely manner.
Thank you.
The school district problems, I don't believe, can be solved by these two bodies here.
So I want to focus on clarifying questions. We'll get, come back to deliberation after we have public comments. So Kyrie, you have a question?
Yeah, I was told recently that Atlanta has really strict regulations about the number of adults and children that are allowed legally to occupy certain sizes of units. Do we have similar restrictions here? And I was, yeah, I was a bit surprised about it, but, well, yeah, it was interesting. But in any case, I didn't confirm that that was the case, but do we have restrictions on the number of people that can occupy certain sizes of units? And it sounds like we don't.
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, there's the Housing Code that talks about overcrowding, but I don't, Nora, city attorney, are you familiar with any such regulations? I don't, no, I don't believe there are.
There are, I am aware of codes in different cities. I mean, typically in California, you find them like in college towns that restrict the number of unrelated people living in a unit together.
Oh, I don't think that's legal in California, anyway.
Berkeley has it, I was just reading something in Daily Cow.
They restrict the number of unrelated people living together?
Yes, and they're actually looking at updating it, it's in the Daily Cow.
The mini dorm issue?
The mini dorm issue and the fraternities, there's a lawsuit, a neighbor is suing the fraternities.
Oh, he's not in with that, yeah.
Okay, that may be a special case. I don't know.
Can we hear from the public?
Yes, certainly. Are there any further questions from the Council or Commission? All right. Three minutes per speaker, roving mic will be coming to you. You can optionally sign in on the clipboard after you've spoken, if you wish. So Mr. Donahue.
First, I wanted to say that, I wanted to note that nobody from the school district here, nobody. That's pretty telling. I'm kind of surprised they weren't invited, first of all, they should have been invited. But on top of that, they should have had the wherewithal to come on their own even without being invited. So it's pretty disappointing that nobody from the school district is here. Okay, I wanted to talk about the 800-pound gorilla in the room here is the private versus public partnership that we need to have to develop our city. And what we're going to need to start doing from now on, which we've never done in this town, and that is, we're going to have to start saying no to developers who come with their projects to our town, because we know what saying yes delivers, and it delivers the town that we have. And Mr. Bryant here told us the town that we have is not the town that we want. So we're going to have to start saying no to developers, that's all there is to it. And I wanted to mention that the presentation that was just given, there's a lot of data, seemed to be a lot of massaging of numbers and a lot of handwashing, and it seems like what we're being told here by Mr. Bryant is we just need to tweak around the edges a little bit, let the developers bring their projects, and we tweak a little bit, but the fault really lies with the API scores in the school district. And to that, I say bunk. I say we have to start delivering family-friendly housing by saying no to developers. And then the most important way to do that, I believe, and is counter to what Mr. Bryant said, is families with young children want and need private little backyard spaces. And we can do that in an urban context, contrary to what Mr. Bryant was saying, by making townhouses with little private backyards, so families can go about doing their chores, the mother and father, what have you, and without watching their child every second. We know this, because that's why families go to the suburbs. We're not the suburbs, though, we need more density and that. So what we do, we have developers deliver us these townhouses, and then to have it, quote, "pencil out" for the developers, they can build a tower above the townhouse with market-rate apartments if they want. And that's how we can, we can deliver townhouses that are actually family-friendly, because they have a little backyard, which families want and need, and then have developers be able to, afford to be able to build them for us. So I take issue with Mr. Bryant's poo-pooing of the small backyards being something that families want or need, and I rest my case by just saying, look out at the suburbs. Our suburbs filled with families, and the answer is, yes, they are, and a big reason they are, private backyards. Now, we're building a lot of podium condominiums or what have you, apartments with common areas, with playground equipment, and so you take your children, you go down the hall to the common area, and then you sit there while your child plays, then you have to watch your child, and that's not what families want. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Oh, okay, yes.
Hi, my name is Crystal. I'm a first-time homeowner in Emeryville, and I'm here because I'm very excited to learn about the city and hopefully make it a home eventually. So I just bought a house by myself, and in the next five years, the most important question on my mind is, if I'm going to stay at this house, I'm going to get married and have children... on my mind is, if I'm going to stay at this house, I'm going to get married and have children and, you know, make Emeryville my home. And I thank you for all the information, you know, in the presentation. It's, you know, really informative to my decision for the next few years. I do want to say that, you know, I talked with my boyfriend, that the question that inside our house is, looking at the neighborhood, like, is this where we want to raise our kids? And one very, one negative thing that keeps coming up is what deters us from living here, having a family here long-term, is that we see a lot of these multi-unit, and not just like 50 units, 100 units, there are 300, 400 units. And to us, we feel like these are like walled-off fortresses. And, and when I have kids, you know, they're young kids, like five-year-olds, six-year-olds, you know, I wouldn't feel comfortable, you know, walking with them, because it just feels like people go back to their, you know, fortresses, and there's no, not a lot of real estate for public to walk outside, you know, enjoy the city. So I just want to say that a little bit. And, and again, thank you all for your time and those informations. It's really nice to be here.
Let's see, we have one over here and then one over here. So, yeah, this side first.
I just wanted to speak to the, I just wanted to speak to the interrelationship of two issues we're talking about. One is the composition of family, family size or the type of family we have. And the affordability issue, there was some conversation about how do we incentivize families if you build a two- or three-bedroom unit? How do you make sure those don't go to college students or friends? You know, and if you actually have, this is one of the damning things about losing inclusionary zoning in rental property, but the low-income state housing tax credit rules actually answer that issue for you. You can't put into a tax credit subsidized unit with a low-income housing tax credit unrelated people in that capacity. And so what happens is that for a two- or three-bedroom unit that's built affordably with low-income housing tax credits, you actually achieve the result of putting a family in that unit. And so you address the issue of not being able to otherwise zone or regulate who can go into the unit like you can in a for-profit or market rate unit, simply by adding affordable units to it. So I think this is important to address now, as you go into the next part of the conversation, because they're not mutually exclusive issues. Development of affordable units is necessary, but that can be, and you can achieve the outcome that you're talking about here of increasing family-friendliness by actually requiring or incentivizing, in the ways that are legal, the inclusion of affordable units in these buildings that are developed. The only other thing I'd say to the comments about restrictions on how many people are in a building or who's living in there, or how many children and whatnot, federally subsidized properties, especially voucher programs or 202s or other types of buildings, they actually have guidelines as to who may be, how many people qualify for what size of bedroom. So that may be where that idea came from. For example, there are different constellations of family composition, whether those are multiple adults or children, and those constellations, depending on the ages of the people in the property and their genders, met out to what size of bedroom they're eligible for when they live in a subsidized unit. And so there are structures that, inside those federal guidelines, come out like that. There are also local zoning regulations that are usually safety code or building code regulations to basically deter squatting or other types of substandard housing occupancy that are aligned around non-familial mutual housing. So in other words, not having 10 unrelated people living in a one-bedroom unit, even if it's owned by one person for the purpose of, because it's not a family under a legal definition, not equating to substandard housing. So I think that's where some of those things may come from. I'm not familiar, it would be illegal to actually dictate whether children can or can't live, or how many children you may have in a building, with the exception being that the bedroom size in federally standard, or subsidized buildings are standardized. So that's my comments on that.
And could the speakers, at your option, identify yourselves, please?
Hi, my name is Tim Curran. I'm an Emeryville resident, and I have a daughter who's seven years old. And I've been here for many years and seen the development of Emeryville over the years. And I've seen the development of the big box architecture, I've seen Pixar come in and the rest of it. Presently, as Nora said, the infrastructure is something that we could focus on to, to provide a community and an environment in which families could have their children. But the present system, whatever you have working, whether it's the bonus system or whatnot, has produced what we have today, which is very, very stingy on public benefits. And we might have a gated campus across the street that's very beautiful and has a soccer field that no one can use. We might have a park system which is, has some pluses, but also is very, could use some improvement. And we have some developments coming up, which are examples. Charlie mentioned that, quote, Sherwin-Williams will surely provide more park space as one of the solutions. Well, that's not true. Sherwin-Williams will incorporate public property into their, into their development. And in doing so, they'll receive bonus points for this. And in doing so, they'll increase the density and probably diminish the asset of the city and make that park space probably less desirable to me and my family. So I would, I would urge the, the council and the, the planning commission to really review of these incentives and how easy they are to get and what they produce. They produce, they produce corporations and housing developers who come in and take advantage of these wonderful incentives very easily. You have 30% of the incentives on the bonus program, 19 categories, 30% of those are 50 points. It means you can get two, two of those categories satisfied, and you can kind of build the density and intensity up to the maximum levels. So what I'm saying is that this ease of getting through your regulations, your incentives, this ease has produced what we have today. And this is kind of, Emeryville for families is kind of an embarrassment. When I take my child to Berkeley, to a private school, and we talk to other parents, they are kind of embarrassed about the environment that I, I raise my child in. They don't see it as a very child-friendly place for many reasons, and it's not the size of the bedrooms. It's, I don't, that's a whole nother issue. It's not about the situation that's going on with backyards. It's an aggregate situation. So the infrastructure that Nora mentioned, over the many years that I've lived here, has produced what we've gotten, Emeryville today.
I would just like to respond to a couple of those points. I saw a lot of heads nodding, so I just want to clarify a couple of things. One is that virtually none of the development that you see in Emeryville today is because of our bonus system. That bonus system has only been in place for a couple of years, and we have hardly had any developments that have used that bonus system, that have actually been built yet. So that's not the reason why the city is the way it is today. Second, with relation to Sherwin-Williams, their private property, about a third of it or more is zoned open space. They are required to provide public open space on their private property because of the zoning, and they will not get any bonus points for that. That's just a base requirement. So just to clarify that. And we'll talk more about the bonus system this afternoon. Any further public comments? Yes?
Judy Timwell, I'm a resident. So on page 18, the conclusion of, that is, it's talking about 10-plus unit buildings, and the conclusion was that large buildings contribute to the situation that we have now. So I'd like to reiterate what Scott Donahue just said about the fact that it's the size of the building. And this resident here just said that, that the huge blocks of condos were intimidating and unattractive to them as a potential future family in Emeryville. So I would like to reiterate that, that zoning is really crucial here. In terms of family-friendly open space, I do live in cohousing, so my views are skewed, but I don't believe it's necessary for everybody to have their own little backyard. In fact, I think it's anti-community. I think for very young children, a small space where they can play outside, a little porch or deck or something is sufficient. But I do think that kids really like to play with each other and that communal spaces that are safe and that are visible from the residential unit is sufficient or, and desirable.
Any further public comments?
Hi, good morning. I'm Jennifer West. I just want to say that I'm so pleased to see the staff analysis and the depth of this analysis, because I think it really makes it very easy for the planning commission and city council to make good choices and direction, and so I want to applaud the information that you've provided. And I see as a goal, it's really about achieving some kind of balance. It seems that with the development over the last 20 years, it swung directly towards studios and one-bedrooms, and that's what we have today, that's what we are dealing with. But to add to that current housing stock, we may need to compensate. That if we want to get to that 20-50 balance, as Charlie mentioned, if we want 50% of units to be two bedrooms plus, well, how much would we have to add to get there? It's not actually just adding 50% in new dwellings, so to think about that as well. And I don't, I want to say in general, I don't think we should be afraid of density. I think density brings lots of good things to our town, including better transportation, better open space, and that kind of interaction. I totally want to echo the fortress comment that was made. I think by walling off our communities, we are not doing ourselves a service. And we may think that inside those fortresses, oh, people are getting along great and having good community, but that's not always the case. People don't necessarily know their neighbors unless there's a deliberate design element, which we've addressed somewhat in the design guidelines, I think. So good work and look forward to seeing what comes of this.
Any further public comments?
Make a second comment? One minute.
What do you think? Do we allow that?
If there's no one else who hasn't spoken.
All right, anybody else who hasn't spoken?
Once.
Want to make a comment? All right, one further comment.
Less than one minute.
Less than one minute.
Everybody here should recognize, really what we're talking about are three spaces, really. That's all we're talking about. We're talking about the Sherwin-Williams development proposal, we're talking about the marketplace development proposal, and we're talking about the Nady site up on, up on near the freeway near Berkeley. So it's really only three sites that have any consequence here. So when we're talking today, everyone should recognize, that's what we're talking about, Nady, we're talking about public market, and we're talking about Sherwin-Williams. So when we go about trying to, you know, formulate public policy regarding family-friendly housing, remember, it's three sites. And I agree, I want to say I agree with Ms. West here when she said, we need to catch up. So we got to better make sure these last three sites that, in our lifetimes that are going to be developed, are going to catch us up to where we want to be rather than just simply add some family-friendliness. We need to catch up to where we should be. Thank you.
Charlie, if I may, I don't normally do this, but I'm going to have to publicly disagree with Mr. Donahue. And we have three vacant sites that are under consideration right now, but in my neighborhood at Powell and Christie, we're also looking at the site where the 76 gas station is, called the Gateway Project. That's a whole project that could be totally densified. Our general plan states that Powell Street Plaza could also be redeveloped into a much denser place. We might even carry the street through that development. And then there's also the whole East Bay Ridge Shopping Center, that huge site there could totally be redeveloped. So our city isn't built out, and what we're doing in looking at those projects is we're looking at very expensive sites. So, so that brings us up to six for a city of 1.6 or 1.2 square miles. I think we have a lot of opportunities here that we need to, and these laws that we're looking at enacting are going to have impacts on all kinds of different sites, so that's not a total accurate statement.
There will, let's, let us not have a discussion between the commission and council and the audience, please. Okay, if there's no further public comment, oh, there's.
Brian Donahue.
Well, I guess, I guess we'll give you one minute.
Thanks. I just, the other comment that I failed to say was about our school district and how they're not at the table today, and that's unfortunate. I agree, because I feel like what we're talking about directly is affected by their actions and also impacts their decisions. So I would applaud the city for having some kind of a summit that could talk with them as well. And we don't, do not, these bodies do not have a say over what happens with the school district, and a lot of what we're discussing here, I think, is directly correlated with the quality of education, and, yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Any further?
Charlie?
Yes.
Do the staff feel like they have received adequate input and direction?
Well, we haven't had, we haven't had the council and commission deliberation yet.
Just want to make sure we don't walk away without.
No, no, we're not done. We're not done. So any other public comment from anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Going once, going twice? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission and council for your deliberations. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first, what the hell? We've all spent a lot of time on this, there's been a lot of discussion on this. I want to commend the staff for the excellent analysis and the work that they have provided for us. I think their recommendations, on balance, are good recommendations and will provide a basis to move forward. So I would propose that the council and the planning commission support the staff recommendation on these two.
All right, anybody else?
I would like to support that square footage we can be agnostic about when it comes to this, partly because I've seen many spaces really livable, if done right, at a smaller scale.
Right.
It really depends on design. Design matters, is what I'm trying to say. So, you know, the, the minimum size, we don't have to, I don't think worry too much about that.
That was a staff recommendation, right? To be agnostic?
Basically, yeah. Or I should, well, we don't have a recommendation on that issue, put it that way.
Fok, I'll go next. On the discussion questions, should the minimum percentage of two- or three-bedroom units be required? I am okay with that. The concern I have is, what we'll discuss further on in today's discussion, is I might have a concern with that of being 50% or more two-bedroom units if we go along with an affordability requirement for bonus points. So if we're going to require that affordable units be put into a unit or a development before they can earn bonus points, then I think that number might be a little difficult to achieve in terms of cost, so I just want to give that to everyone's mind, so when we get into that further today, we can talk about that, see what we agree or disagree with. I think the two-bedroom plus units being family-friendly should only be required to the number of units that are needed for family-friendly. And the reason I say that is because projects are difficult and are, a lot of our lots are constrained. And I think this could stymie creativity. We could lose the ability to have some really interesting living places for someone who wants a two-bedroom unit that's not necessarily family-friendly. So I think what we want, might want to look at is making the number of units family-friendly that meet with the current guidelines, not every unit in a development should be all family-friendly. Should the minimum unit size, I agree with Councilmember Donahue, that we should go with the staff recommendation and remain indifferent about that. And I just, I'm still questioning, should there be an exception to the requirements? I, you know, I think maybe that might have to be on a case-by-case basis. I agree with Nora, and I've often been saying along with them, I think the three-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom plus is an important factor in bringing in families. I think we need to maintain a balance of that. We need to look at that in a realistic fashion, but it is a consideration. But beyond that, we need to look at our city itself, because as I've stated many times before, I've talked to three new professors coming to UC Berkeley, have asked them if they have looked at Emeryville. They never ask about our unit size. Invariably, they always ask about things, city amenities, things we can control, how our schools, where my kids play and do have a safe community. So I think the city amenity part is very important for us, probably as equally important as units, numbers of bedroom, if not more important. And I just have a question on the state regs. When Mr. Bowder was talking about the, the state funds that the units used for those funds be related occupants, is that in any affordable unit, even if it's a mixed, or is that only in affordable complexes like the Ambassador?
Catherine, can you respond to that?
So our BMRs that were created by the inclusionary housing, we have rules about occupancy. Maximum occupancy is basically based on the housing code. We don't have a special code for how many people can live in it. We just use the housing code, and I actually have to do that fairly often. When households are applying for units, I have to check to make sure that When households are applying for units, I have to check to make sure that the household isn't too big for the unit that's provided.
Well, more than the size, I'm worried about the funding. If the state is providing funding for these people, and it's controlled that it has to be a family, a family unit, non-related people, is that only in developments that are all affordable, or does that law also apply to just affordable units within a mixed-use, you know, affordable market rate building?
It's quite rare for there to be that situation. It applies to the units that are funded by the state.
Okay, in any development.
In any development, but so, like, for instance, Bridge Court has state funding for, in 40% of their units, that rule would only be in those units that are actually funded, that are, wouldn't apply to the market rate units themselves.
Okay, very good. That's all I have for now.
Jack?
So, in terms of the, in terms of the questions that we have in front of us, the minimum percentage of two bedrooms and three bedrooms, like Stephen, my response to that is kind of contingent at this point, but my inclination is that we need to push and compensate, like Jennifer West is talking about, that maybe we need to think about a higher percentage than 50 in order to reach a tipping point in the critical mass for families in town. The other thing that I'm thinking about in terms of the family-friendly guidelines is that I, when I, when I think about those, and whether or not they should be applied to every two- and three-bedroom unit, I think yes. I think we should think about them almost in terms of universal design, so that there's, no matter who is living in that space, right, because we can't predict that, as we've said, and we can't control that, that it would be friendly and accessible and useful to any kind of family formation, right, whether that's adults or whether that's children. So I prefer to look at those almost like universal design, and I think they should apply to all the two- and three-bedroom units. The minimum unit sizes, I would be willing to go along with being agnostic on that right now. In terms of the exceptions, I want to hear from other folks about what that process or procedure would look like, whether the exceptions would come to Planning Commission first or straight to council, but am willing to listen to and hope to hear from other people on that first.
Diane, did you have your hand up?
I did. As for the minimum percentage of two- and three-bedroom, I'm of the mind that I'd like to see numbers as to what we would need to do to compensate.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with remaining agnostic on size of units. And as Jack stated, I'm willing to listen to what process for exceptions would be and what types of exceptions would be allowed. And I just wanted to echo some other sentiments that I heard today, that I would agree that a summit or a meeting with EOSD is in order. I think looking at the number of public school students that are exiting and going to other schools and other districts, or at least what it looks like by this pie chart, this is an alarming number to me. And, you know, it's, it's one thing to try to figure out what's the causation, what's the correlation, but it, you know, as Mr. Curran pointed out, we have an aggregate problem, and we all need to work together to, to make our community better, and all be heading in the same direction. So it's, I think it would be helpful for the school district, and helpful for the Planning Commission, helpful for City Council to go forward on the same path.
Brett?
Yeah, it's, when I started looking at the packet, I just started digging in before I looked at the agenda, and I immediately started writing a list of kind of all the different components that I thought were involved in this issue, and I had six, or yeah, six items listed, and we're really addressing three of them, I think, today, the family-friendly design guidelines, affordable housing stock, and ownership. And the education, community amenities, community pride were three items that we're told not to be addressing today, or that these aren't really on the agenda. And so, I would love to see a summit that addresses those as well, because I feel like those are all key components, and they're all intertwined. And so, another summit, I don't want to give up another Saturday.
Would you have people agree?
Oh, I had, these are mine, education, community amenities, community pride. Community pride might be a little nebulous, but, but then back to, I know we'll be addressing the affordable housing and ownership in the second, second half of our, of our day, but to go to the family-friendly housing design. I do think that we should make a lot of the guidelines required, including the unit mix. I, you know, I don't know about the 10-50, the 10 for three-bedrooms seems sufficient to me, I don't know about the 50 for twos and up. I do think that we need to look at revamping the bonus point system and not, you know, and as part of that, the family-friendly component. I think right now, the way that the bonus point system is set up, that we're giving developers a lot of bonus points for things that they would practically, they would likely do anyway. I mean, and there are a lot of these also that we could require. I mean, there are cities that require lead silver, whereas we give 10 bonus points for it. We give, you know, we give bonus points for a lot of, you know, energy efficiency, water efficiency, open space, a lot of items that we could easily just require, and start putting more emphasis on the family-friendly components of the design, and the bonus points that those provide. And then, you know, I, like Judy, live in Cohousing, where we have, it's a, we own a condo, it's a 12-unit condo development, and I think eight of the 12 households there have children or have had children who are now adult age. And so I think there is a lot to be said for how community-focused the development is, and how manageable, how manageable it feels for families. And so, I don't know if it is about everyone having their own little backyard, but, you know, I honestly don't believe that's the case, but I do believe that it involves creating manageable-sized community environments. And that gets into the design and a lot of the design guidelines that we've been talking about, but I think it also gets into how larger developments are broken up. And I think when we look at a 300-unit development that is just a big wall of units around a courtyard, we're basically looking at an environment that is going to, you know, it's not going to nurture a sense of safety and feeling that you can put your kids out in the courtyard and want to be playing with a couple other kids or some older kids, and keep an eye on them. You're going to be farther away from that courtyard, you're not going to necessarily know everyone in that building. And so, if that kind, that size of development can be broken up into smaller components, where maybe it's 20 or 30 households around a courtyard, and those eyes are on that courtyard, those people in that courtyard share certain amenities, so there's more likelihood that they know each other, that's going to create more of an opportunity for, for that community that's going to, it's going to, you know, appeal to families. Those are some of my comments.
Let's see, Buzz, and then Kyrie.
I just have one point I'd like clarified. Would these new rules and regulations that we may adopt apply to the three existing projects currently under consideration who've paid fees and submitted plans in conformance with these existing regulations?
Yes and no. The fact of having filed an application does not necessarily exempt you from a change of regulations. The project is not considered vested until after the building permits been issued, basically. But concerned, so, so these, if, you know, whatever new regulations are adopted, would, unless the City Council in the ordinance writes in explicit exemptions, they would apply to projects currently in the pipeline, including the Nady project and the, or the, you know, Anton, 6701 Shell Mount, and the Sherwin-Williams project. The Marketplace, however, is a PUD, and that PUD was approved in 2008. They already have their entitlements through that PUD, so that is a vested project in terms of entitlements. What they are before the Planning Commission for now are what are called final development plans, which is basically design review. Our regulations specifically say that PUDs are subject to the regulations that were in effect when the PUD was approved. That could be changed, but that's what the regulations currently say. Having said that, I would say that the developers of the Marketplace have been, in my view, making a good faith effort to try to comply with the, what we're coming up with now, and they have been having extensive meetings with our design consultant, who has worked on our family-friendly design guidelines. They've had lengthy meetings just to review their unit plans, to try to ensure that they're as family-friendly as they can make them. But unless we change the code in that regard, they would not be subject to these new regulations. Kyrie?
Just getting back to our discussion questions, my comments are with regard to the minimum percentage of two- and three-bedroom units be required. I agree that we definitely should include that as a provision to make it mandatory. As far as percentage, I still want to have more input on that before I would say exactly what that should be, but I'm leaning towards the 50% to 60%. And then just to comment, I guess to touch on what you just said, Charlie, about Marketplace, one of the things that I've always encouraged developers that come before the Planning Commission is to try to strike a balance between having more two- and three-bedroom units, and I do see that Marketplace is making an effort to do that. What I'd like to see happen, though, is that when those projects step away from the Planning Commission, that, that they, that just doesn't fall by the wayside during construction, because when things get changed, and it's very difficult to find out after the fact that things have changed, and there's, you know, there needs to be oversight that they're actually going to implement what they're telling us they're going to implement when they come to the Planning Commission and the City Council.
Well, just on that, I would note that staff does make our best effort, and when, when the building permit plans come to us for review and sign-off, we pull out the Planning Commission-approved plans, and we lay them side by side, and we make sure that they match. And we don't sign off the building permit until we've, we're sure that it's what the Planning Commission approved, so we try to keep on top of that.
Okay, because that's really important.
Right.
As far as the family-friendly design guidelines, I'm in support of having that apply to all two-plus-bedroom units, because I think that the benefits of what are in the guidelines benefit pretty much everyone, whether you're a family with children, or, I mean, it also suits the definitions of many different types of families, and family doesn't necessarily involve children. So, kind of like the universal design thing that you were talking about. As far as the minimum unit size being established, I'm going to take a slightly different tact on the agnostic thing and say that I feel that we shouldn't go any less than what we have seen so far. So this chart that we have, the average size of units between 1994 and 2015, I would say we don't want to go any less than that, and see these like micro, you know, micro-studios, and, because I think that can be problematic, so that's my take on that. As far as exceptions, I agree that there should be a process, but I'd like to understand a bit more about the comment that was made in one of our previous meetings, where I think it was an affordable housing, either developer or designer, I don't know exactly his title, but he did comment and say that, you know, it, certain, they would be, I guess there were certain units that, based upon the size, they wouldn't get, achieve the funding that they need. So I just want to understand more about that statement. Was that just private funding, or was that, you know, federal funding? Because we don't want to have affordable projects go at risk because we're saying that it has to be a certain size. So I just want to understand more about that before we say...
Catherine, are you familiar with that?
Yeah, so, he was talking about tax credit units, and the tax credit unit does have rules about sort of luxury aspects of projects, and size is one of those. But the 3706 San Pablo has the units that are, as the three- and four-bedroom units are as large as what the family-friendly guidelines had, had, had put in them as a minimum, and there was, there's no problem with those.
Okay.
Right, I don't think, my take on that was, I'm not as familiar with that issue, certainly as Catherine is, but my take on what he was saying was that it wasn't a hard and fast rule, it was just that they, there were certain standards they were kind of looking for, and if you were bigger than those standards, they, it might cause you a problem with getting funding. That was, that was what my take on it.
And then the last thing I want to say is, I really appreciate the, the couple of folks that came here from the community and talked about their concerns, and I feel like it's really important to involve more of that input, as I've seen in the past, and one of the reasons that brought me to the Planning Commission as a long-term resident was being at a community workshop and being able to provide input on something that directly impacted me, so I would really like to have that process happen here in this discussion, that we have some community workshops around this whole discussion, because we're making the decision, and affect a lot of other folks. And I know that that's, you know, difficult, and there's a challenge to do that, but I think that it's really important to understand what people really want that live here, or even what their friends want, that it may be considering, you know, moving to Emeryville to raise families, so.
I would note that we sent that postcard, I believe, to every resident.
I got two, I got two copies.
And, you know, and this is, this is what we got, so...
I know, I just wish that there were more input, though. I think it's important.
Were we also asking for a workshop, which would be more community involvement, rather than just a public meeting?
It would be, right, it would be a workshop, similar to what we did for the traffic calming thing, you know, 10 years ago.
On the general plan updates, during committee.
Yeah, kind of like that, yeah.
So the word, the public has more input and has a better chance to talk to us.
Okay, well, there's a balance between that and how quickly you want these regulations adopted.
Can I ask Catherine a follow-up question?
Sure.
The, so this is really sort of more related to the second half of this, but the tax credits have come up a couple times, so I want to ask a question. Would you anticipate that units that would be affordable under sort of the bonus system, the revised bonus system that's sort of recommended for the second half, would you anticipate that those would be tax credit units?
A developer might choose to do a 4% tax project, project if they, if there was enough affordable units in the project. It's unlikely that they would be a 9% tax project. There, there's slightly different reasons why most 9% tax project units are 100% affordable, but some 4% units, 4% tax project units are multi, mixed income. So it could be, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I saw Ruth and Gail, so Ruth first.
So, to weigh in on the discussion questions, first of all, I want to appreciate all the staff who went to very in-depth analysis, it's very obvious. And you mentioned trend lines are computer-generated, I, I don't know if I'd have the brain power to figure that out.
I used, I learned how to do that in planning school, but that was about more years ago than I care to mention.
Well, so, to answer the questions that staff's posing to us to frame the discussion, yes, we should require a minimum percentage. My concern, if we go with the 50 and 10, is that we don't make up for past imbalance, and I think we need to really focus on trying to have a more balanced city, not just balance it on a per-project-by-project basis, because we're, the city is more than just the sum of its projects, it has to hang together. So, and all of the larger bedrooms units should be designed in a way that could be conducive to raising children, as has been pointed out, it wouldn't really hurt anybody else who chooses to live there. And, but I also want to make, as we move towards requiring these larger units, we also have to require the amenities that everybody says are essential to really make it work. It's not just interior space. I mean, yes, there are cities... I mean, yes, there are cities, and large cities, where children just are raised in apartments, but it's also dependent on having a city park across the street, or it's, you know, to be able to run around outside. I really appreciate Brad's comments about breaking up a large parcel into common area play spaces or other kinds of spaces where it just feels more -- where there could be more eyes and ears, and it's a smaller scale within the larger whole. And I could talk about, like, the courtyards would have been a perfect project with all these internal courtyards, where they could have been designed with a public amenity that signaled something different than what's there now. So I think we need also need to -- you're just asking about interior, but I also think we need to be requiring those kind of public amenities that would allow for that, not just like landscaped courtyards, but active play spaces. You know, climbing structures need to be required in at least some portion of the open space of a -- or in common areas. And then, you know, if there's a common room that it has the capability for indoor games and playing, and you get the idea. So, yes, these should be required, and they need to go in with the amenities that'll actually make a project work. You mentioned the Santa Cruz lower unit sizes, but you didn't say how well that's working or not.
I don't know. I just got that from their document.
So--
That was for affordable units.
Okay, so, yeah, but still, we don't know how well that's working.
No, we don't.
And, you know, what the -- if it's -- if the -- if they're calm, relaxing, safe havens, or if they're boiler, you know, cook -- boiler-cookers, you know, for -- because they're too crowded. So I don't really know what to say, except I do think people need a certain amount of comfortable living space and not to be jammed in. And the only thing I could say on a basis for exceptions might be overriding location, but I can't imagine what that would be. So if there was some reason for requiring -- for exceptions to the unit mix, I guess I would be open to reviewing it on a case-by-case basis, but I just can't think of any circumstances where that -- where an exception would have validity. I just don't get it.
Can I?
Right.
Can I say something?
All right, Catherine?
So you might have certain special needs populations that would -- so a disabled household that needs a caretaker, and in that case, you might want the sort of two master suites sort of situation. So there are certain populations that if you are designing for that population, then they wouldn't necessarily want the family-friendly unit design. They might have a special unit design that was needed for these different populations. So that's the type of exception I would expect. Generally, that would come with an affordable housing component as well.
Gail?
I agree that, well, I think that the 50 and 10% level of unit mix is appropriate, and I think that we should also incentivize beyond that. I think as a requirement, the 50% makes sense. I think we should try to move towards a more balanced total number, but I think that doing that with incentives is a realistic way to do it. I think that it's -- the unit size, I agree with Scott, that design is a really key factor, and if they're designed well, that that should -- we should be able to look at them and see whether they work or not. Excuse me. And I do think that there should be a process at looking for exceptions. And, you know, the first thing that came to mind for me was senior housing. If there are unrelated seniors that might want to each have their own unit, but together with, you know, their own space, together within a unit. So I think that it's possible that there are circumstances where people don't need to have all the bedrooms together and would like to have their own bathroom attached to their bedroom, things like that. So I think that there needs to be some mechanism for looking at a case-by-case basis and seeing whether an exception should be made. I'm also a little bit, on the design end, I'm a little bit mixed about whether units above the requirement should be all family-friendly, because I do think that there's a lot of creative living spaces that can be creative, that created, that might not need to have the wide hallway with bathrooms in this location and that. So I think that a little bit of flexibility on the units beyond what we're requiring would not be a bad thing.
I think you've heard it from every--
Yeah.
Not me.
Scott.
Sorry, I didn't mean to go last, but--
Oh.
Oh, and Scott, okay.
Well, go ahead.
Um, so, first of all, I want to thank staff for the really great staff report. And if anybody, even though it took me three whole evenings to get through it, I enjoyed every minute of it.
It was a real page-turner.
No, seriously, it was. It was. So if anybody here has not read the staff report, the presentation only starts to do it justice. There's a lot of additional great data in it, and I would encourage you to do so. And along with that, so I actually asked Charlie for one additional statistic that he generated, and that is the standard error of the regression analysis. And so I'm not a statistician, but as best that I can explain it, it is the average distance that the observed values lie from the trend line. So it's sort of, it says how accurate a prediction the trend line is of the actual data. And so I just bring that up. I may, you know, as we kind of get through this, I may bring that up at different points, but I'll just give you like one example, which is that two-bedroom, two-plus-bedroom units compared to the percentage of households with children is -- and comparing that to three-plus-bedroom units as a percentage compared to the percentage of households with children, not only is two -- is the two-plus bedrooms versus families with children, not only is it a stronger correlation, but it also has a better -- it's also a better predictor of the actual data.
Based on the standard error.
Based on the standard error, yeah. So for me, anyway, that kind of just defines like what are the reasonable expectations, like what the -- the standard error is calculated in such a way that like 95% of the actual outcomes, the actual data should be within the standard error. So it kind of defines what we can reasonably expect if we, you know, if we affect one of the variables, then we could reasonably expect that we would fall somewhere within that range. What else?
They may correct.
So as far as the discussion questions, I would also support the staff recommendation on unit mix, the 50% two-plus bedrooms to 10% three-plus bedrooms. The -- so as far as whether -- so the family-friendly guidelines, I think, are pretty critical, and I would really encourage the council, as you guys take that up, to review them very thoroughly. For me, as I said at the meeting where we considered them, it's a lot of, to me, very nebulous standards. I mean, I also don't have children, so I'm trying to, you know, evaluate what makes units family-friendly for other people and thinking about myself in the future, so I don't approach that from experience, so -- but I would encourage you all to review that very carefully, because I think that is, that's a very critical component of this. And I'll get back to that, actually, with exceptions, too. The -- so whether or not those guidelines should be applied to units beyond what are required, I'm going to go ahead and disagree with what I've heard here, just because that was sort of my initial reaction, and I haven't yet completely been convinced otherwise. So -- but I also will say it's not something I feel adamantly about, but my gut reaction was that we're trying to encourage unit mix and unit diversity, and the two groups are sort of not mutually exclusive. I think the family-friendly guidelines create, you know, hopefully create units that are appropriate for families. They're also appropriate for other people. The, you know, even if you look at the guidelines, even the undesirable examples, you know, create units which are appropriate for other types of households, but they're not necessarily not appropriate for families with children or families. So I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I think we're trying to create a mix, so that was my initial thought, was that, you know, I realize we already do have a lot of units of the undesirable type, perhaps. So, yeah. So, I mean, and that is, you know, that's a description. The mayor mentioned something about, you know, was talking about kind of the city as an aggregate and looking at the city as a whole. I was reading a really good article yesterday about diversity in cities and compared to integration in cities. And so that, you know, the difference there is kind of the city as a whole versus the neighborhood and the block level. So it's very much something, you know, it's very much the same thing. So again, that's sort of a question mark. That was my initial reaction, and I, like I said, my mind has not been completely changed, but I don't feel that strongly about it. Then I will say regarding the exceptions, I would support some exceptions. I mean, I always kind of support hard-earned flexibility. I do think it needs to be hard-earned, and so if we were going to allow exceptions, I think, you know, the finding should be something to the effect of the applicant has demonstrated that there are amenities and characteristics of the proposed housing that show that it will be suitable for families or something like that. And then lastly, I wanted to follow up on a comment. Well, it was a comment that was given a couple of times regarding projects that feel like fortresses. So I am actually going to propose this. This isn't something that's included in the presentation or anywhere on the staff report, but I am going to propose an additional regulation, which I've not received a lot of support for so far, but I feel extremely passionate about it, so even if I continue to not receive support, I will continue to bring it up.
You go.
And that is that I don't think that -- I think that our projects and our community should be designed in such a way that people are not able to pull into a parking garage and take an elevator directly to their unit. I think, as is true in a lot of urban areas, that you should have to exit the parking garage, out onto the street, and enter the building through a lobby, so that you are -- so that you have to then interact with the street, interact with the neighborhood around you, interact with the lobby of your building and the people that are also entering through that lobby. I think in most buildings, we -- this is true for pedestrians. Anyone that's approaching the building as a pedestrian or a bicyclist would enter through the lobby, but unfortunately, a lot of the time for drivers, we allow them to drive into a parking garage and enter the building through a different means. I think that, you know, anyone in a community, you know, can be asocial if they choose, but I don't, you know, as active -- as community members, we, you know, we have to interact with people in our community on a day-to-day basis, and I don't think we should coddle people who are trying to avoid those interactions.
Scott?
Just one last comment here, that I've heard things that are new today from what we have, you know, traditionally talked about. And this is, you know, the Bay Area is made up of all these cities, 106 cities. We're not Chicago, New York, Los -- we don't have all roads leading to one place. The Bay Area, by necessity, has to invent themselves, and we're being asked to do that right now. We could invent some Emeryville new guidelines.
I just heard a suggestion here that was kind of new, that maybe has been done elsewhere. Traditional cities are like that. I really am responding to what Commissioner Gunkel talked about, about focusing within a large project, smaller community areas. I think we can do what we have going forward, these large projects, if they are focused into smaller sub-communities. And I think that we should really be serious about that. That's -- we looked at the first presentation about what we are. We're extreme. We are a city of large projects. Well, we have to make some decisions that are different than other cities, and I think what we've heard today about the fortress idea and then how to address it by making sub-communities, that's where we need to go. And that may not -- we might not have an exact definition of that, but I think we have to get there. I think we need to define that. I think that's the key for us.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Any further comments from the Commissioner Council? All right, good timing. It's 10 after 12. We are ready for lunch. We'll be back in about 20 minutes. about 20 minutes. Well, I think we need four commissioners and three council members.
Two, okay. Three, you're the council lawyer.
Yeah, we've got, we've got that.
We've got three, four commissioners, we've got four.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
All right, ready to go again?
Yes.
Okay. Before we continue, I would just like, if you'll indulge me for a second, I just want to recap and make sure that we heard you correctly, it sounds to me as if we have consensus, general consensus at least, around most of these points, I heard support for the 50% two or more bedrooms and 10% three or more bedrooms, I also heard that there may be a desire to have a higher number than that, to make up for past deficits, and/or maybe consider that as some sort of an incentive, to have higher number than that as a, some kind of a bonus thing or something. I heard that all the units that are two or more bedroom, including three or more bedrooms, should be designed to be family-friendly, whether they're required units or not, I heard that don't particularly want to dictate exact minimum unit sizes, and I heard that exceptions could be considered on a case-by-case basis, exceptions to any of those things.
I think that sums up.
So that pretty well sums up what you all said, all right. Well, let's hope that the second half is as smooth as that, we'll see.
Yeah.
All right, this part is about affordable housing, ownership housing, the proposed incentives, and the development bonus system, and then we'll again wrap up with discussion questions. So concerning affordable housing, this chart, which is taken from the Housing Element, summarizes average monthly rents in rental housing from 2000 to, I'm sorry, from, the heading on this slide is wrong, it's 2010 to 2013, not 2000 to 2013, so we've had increases of 26% in the studio in one bedrooms, and 31% in two bedrooms, only 12% in three bedrooms, however, we also did a survey of a few projects, I think six projects since, since 2013, and found that the three-bedroom units actually had much steeper increases, I don't remember the exact, 19 to 20% increases in rents in three-bedroom units in the past, well, between 2013, 2014, so definitely rents are going up, that's not a surprise to anybody, I don't think. We have what's called a regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, which is dictated to us from the state and Association of Bay Area Governments, every city and county in California has this, our current RENA number for the next Housing Element cycle, which is from 2014 to 2022, eight-year period, is 1,498 units, slightly lower than 1,500 units, and that's broken down by these various income categories. So you can see about half of it is above moderate, or what we refer to as market rate, and then the other half is these, breaks down by these different income categories. I would just like you to take note of these percentages over here, as we get further into the discussion, we're going to suggest that, first of all, the extremely low category should probably be provided in special projects, because this category typically requires supportive services that are usually provided in more of an institutional kind of a setting, so they're usually not intermingled with market rate units, but, and also, our, our experience indicates that the very low and low-income units have often run into difficulty in ownership housing, because they have no control over the HOA dues and utility costs and things like that, and they often run into financial trouble. So we suggest that in ownership housing, we include moderate at a certain rate, and, but for rental housing, that we also include very low and low, as well as moderate, and the reason why these percentage numbers over here are important is, we think that they should be provided in roughly this ratio, this percentage, in order to meet our RENA, so that a person, when they move, when their income increases, they don't get priced out, but they can't yet afford a market rate unit, but they make too much money to afford their very low-income unit, then they don't have to leave the project, if it has all of the different income categories, they can just move up. So these numbers here are important to keep in mind for, for that reason in the future. Now, the question that was often asked, well, how good a job have we done in the past of meeting our RENA obligations, and this chart attempts to address that question, this is for the last RENA period, this is information that came from the Association of Bay Area Governments, so that, the last RENA period just ended this past year, 2006 to 2014, the red bar here indicates Bay Area averages, all the cities and counties in the Bay Area, and the blue is Emeryville, the total is over here on the far right, so as you can see, the Bay Area overall met about half of the RENA numbers, Emeryville met three-quarters of it, so we didn't meet 100% of our RENA, but we did better than the Bay Area average. We certainly did fine in the market rate category, we produced more than 100% of our market rate RENA, whereas overall Bay Area was about 80%. We also did pretty well in the very low-income category, although not 100%, we did get about 62 or 63%, which is about twice the Bay Area average, so we did pretty decently in that category. Low and moderate, we didn't do so well, we have some work to do in those categories, and there's various reasons for that, but overall, we did better than the Bay Area in total, and I would also note that currently in the pipeline, we have probably at least 1,500 units, and that includes the ones that are under construction, which will be counted, I believe, towards the next RENA, so we shouldn't have any trouble meeting our RENA for the next eight years, the challenge will be meeting the various income categories. So what tools do we have for affordable housing? Well, they're somewhat limited. The previous Affordable Housing Set-A-Side Program that we had, also known as Inclusionary Zoning, required 9% moderate income and 6% very low-income units in rental housing projects. A recent court case called the Palmer Decision means that we can no longer enforce that provision. The court determined that this was tantamount to rent control, which is basically illegal in California, at least for new projects, however, we still do have the 20% moderate-rate inclusionary requirement for condominiums, the Palmer case did not affect that. Also, the elimination of redevelopment means we have less affordable housing money, as I'm sure you know, 20% of the redevelopment agency's tax increment had to go to affordable housing, well, we don't have that resource anymore, although we still have some of the money left, but we did last year adopt an Affordable Housing Impact Fee, and that provides $20,000 per unit for rental housing, or in lieu of paying the fee, a developer can provide 6.9% of the units at low income or equivalent. We have not had any projects that have pulled permits since this fee was adopted, so we don't have any experience with it yet, but there are a number in the pipeline that will be affected by this. So one idea that staff had in order to try to get more affordable housing, since we can't legislate it any longer, at least as far as rental housing, is to have what's called a voluntary inclusionary zoning system, and that's where the developer would get a bonus, some kind of a bonus for their development, in exchange for providing more affordable Moving, and we'll talk about that a little more in a minute, but first, moving to the issue of ownership housing, I think, you know, the conventional wisdom is that renters are less invested in the community than homeowners, they, they're transient, they move more often, they don't, you know, they don't stick around, and that's partly because they sometimes just, you know, get, get priced out, the rents increase, they have to move, but this, we wanted to just test that to see how true it is, and it certainly turns out it is pretty true. This regression analysis, again, of all the census tracts in the Bay Area, measures the percent of units that are owner, that are renter-occupied, which is along the x-axis here, versus the turnover, the annual turnover, which is measured as the percent of people who say that they moved in the past year, so that's up this axis here, and that correlation is about .36, so it's fairly decent correlation, Emeryville's way up here, we have about two-thirds rental households, and our annual turnover's about 31%. Now, one thing I want to point out about that, though, is that the people who say they moved in the past year are people who live in Emeryville. Now, that means they moved from somewhere else to Emeryville, or maybe they moved from somewhere else in Emeryville to Emeryville, but they're moving into Emeryville, so that's not necessarily a bad thing, especially when you have a population that's, that's growing, like ours is, but clearly there's a correlation between turnover and renters, over here you have about 28% turnover when you have 100% renters, and only about 7% turnover when you have zero or close to 0% renters. Now, there's an interesting statistic that we stumbled across, which is that the Alameda County Assessor can, tells you what units are condominiums versus what units are not condominiums, and according to the Alameda County Assessor, about two-thirds of the dwelling units in Emeryville are actually either condominiums or single-family homes, which means they could be owner-occupied. However, two-thirds of the households in Emeryville are renter-occupied, and what that implies is that a lot, or a fair amount of those condominiums are actually being renter-occupied. So this is how it breaks down, we have about 38% owner-occupied condominiums and houses, we have about 23% renter-occupied condominiums and houses, and then we have about 39% renter-occupied apartments. So the green here, those are the ones that are truly rental units, the red and the blue are all units that could potentially be owner-occupied, but 23% here are not owner-occupied. This happens when individual condo owners rent their units out, or when a developer develops a condo project and then retains ownership of all the units, and then, and rents, rents them out and operates it as if it were a rental apartment project. I would note that, as an example, Watergate, which is a condominium development of 1,249 units, 40% of that is renter-occupied. So there are some issues with ownership housing, it's not basically a panacea for, for, you know, citizen involvement necessarily, many households cannot afford to own, and they're vulnerable to rent increases that may cause them to have to move, as I previously mentioned, low and very low-income ownership units are prone to financial distress because of homeowners' association dues, utility costs, other things like that, that are beyond their control and beyond their ability to pay, and we sometimes have them going into foreclosure, and if that happens, and it's a BMR, a controlled BMR unit, we do run the risk of losing the BMR status for that unit. The consultant study on the school district found that families with school-aged children are attracted more to rental housing than to ownership housing, as they often cannot afford to buy, and as that pie chart indicates, building more ownership housing does not necessarily result in owner occupancy. So given all of those things, the question we would pose, I guess, and there's no right or wrong answer to this, I don't think, is what is the appropriate mix of owner and rental housing? Now, moving on to the proposed incentive and bonus system, this hopefully looks familiar, this is one of the maps from the general plan, it's also incorporated into our planning regulations, this is the floor area ratio map, I'm not going to try to explain what FAR is, if you're not familiar, but it's a pretty basic planning concept, and the area is mapped into these different FAR districts, and by different shades of red, and the legend is over here, and as you can see, in most of those districts, there are two numbers, there's a lower number and a higher number, the lower number is what's called the base number, and that is the level that you're allowed to build to without any kind of special permission, and then the higher number is the so-called bonus number, that's the number that you can, if you get bonuses and special approval, you can build to the higher number. What staff is suggesting is that we drop, we drop these base numbers, keep the bonus level the same, but drop the base level, and what that would do, for FAR, for example, it would look like this, so in, like, looking at the 4.0 to 6.0 FAR district as an example, currently the base is 4.0, which is here, so this is the base now, you can go up to here without any special approval, and then the bonus area is up here between 4 and 6. If we drop the base to 3, down to here, then that would become the area in which you could build without any special approval, and then the bonus would be this area up here, the area that's cross-hatched would be the area that used to be base, but would now require a bonus. So for all the FAR districts, we would suggest lowering the base, so that you then have this area, the cross-hatched area that now would require a bonus, that used to be base, okay? I also just want to point out this little stippled area over here on the far left, which is the 0.5 FAR area, currently there's no bonus available in that area, we're suggesting a bonus, up to 1.0, this is to address the issue in the resident, in eastern residential neighborhoods, where a residential density bonus is available, but a floor area bonus is not available, and what that results in is, if you get the density bonus, but there's no FAR bonus, the average unit size ends up being about 650 square feet, and this is the problem we had with the Doyle Street lofts that were approved by the city council a couple of months ago, we were not able to allow them to have any bigger units than that because of our restrictive floor area ratio. If we add a floor area ratio bonus here, that would allow an average floor area of about 1,250 square feet, if you get the density bonus in those areas, which is certainly more family-friendly than a 650-square-foot unit, so we're proposing to add, add that bonus. Height limits are similar, we proposed dropping the height limit base level in these three higher categories, and similarly for residential density, we would lower the base level in these categories. What this would do is it would just capture more projects that would require a bonus, so anything that fell in this area right here that previously could have been built without a bonus would now need a bonus, it wouldn't affect a project that was already in bonus territory, or one that was already in base territory. And actually, just to illustrate that, we looked at three hypothetical development projects to see how dropping the base level would affect them. So in this hypothetical example, the site is one acre, which is 43,560 square feet, the existing residential density would be 100 base to 135, this is units per acre for a bonus, and the base would be dropped to 65. The FAR that existing is 3.0 base, 4.0 bonus, and the base would be dropped to 2.0, and the height limit, 55 feet base, 75 foot bonus currently, the base would be dropped to 40 feet. The three hypothetical projects, we have basically small, medium, and large, project one would be 65 units, which is 65 units per acre, of course, since the site is one acre, that calculates to an FAR of about 1.87, assuming an average gross unit size of 1,250 square feet, and it would be 40 feet tall. Project two is 100 units, that calculates to an FAR of 2.87, and it's 55 feet tall, and project three, 135 units, FAR is 3.87, and 75 feet tall. So this is what that would look like for those three projects. Project one requires no bonus points in any category currently, and under the proposal, it would remain in the base territory, still would require no bonus points. Project two currently requires no bonus points, it's in that cross-hatched area, but, under the proposal, it would need 50 points for density, 43 for FAR, and 43 for height. The total number of bonus points needed is the highest of these three, so in this case it would need 50 points. Project number three currently needs 100 points for density, 87 for FAR, and 100 for height, so it needs 100 points, under the proposal, it would need 100 for density, 94 for FAR, and 100 for height, so it would still need 100 points. So obviously, the project that is affected by this is the medium-sized project, project two, now, note the asterisk here, though, under the proposed voluntary inclusionary zoning, both project two and project three, in order to earn their bonus points, would now have to provide affordable and/or ownership housing, whereas currently, they don't have to do that. So that's how it affects these three hypothetical projects. The, at the Sherwin-Williams study session in January, the city council expressed interest in re-looking at the bonus point system, this is a summary of the current bonus point system, there are 18 categories, and they have a varying maximum number of points, from 20 to 50, most of them are 35, and there's also a flexible public benefit, which is unspecified, and that is as many points as the commission or council, as the case may be, deems appropriate. An example of that would be the 3706 San Pablo project, for which I can't remember the number of bonus points, but there were bonus points awarded by the commission for that project because of the family-friendly, affordable nature of, of the overall project. The full bonus point system is attached to your staff report as attachment two, so that's got all the details about all the regulations that apply to each of these categories, and all of the subcategories that are within all of these categories, there's been a lot of discussion about this, there's a couple of points I just want to make about it, first of all, you could certainly feel free to eliminate some of these categories if you want to, or eliminate the whole thing if you want to, but it's important to understand that whatever you set as the base requirement for anything, a developer only gets bonus points if they go above and beyond that voluntarily, so it has to be beyond standard conditions of approval, environmental review mitigation measures, anything else that the city may require of the project, you don't get bonus points for that. In case in point, Sherwin-Williams, they have to build all those parks, that's because it's zoned that way, they don't get points for that, so anything you have to do anyway, you don't get bonus points for. I know the electrical vehicle charging stations was a, an example that was brought up in Sherwin-Williams, why should they get bonus points for that, they should do it anyway? Well, as a matter of fact, they do have to do it anyway, 3% of all parking spaces are required to be electrical vehicle charging stations, so they're going to have that, they don't get any bonus points for that, they were proposing to provide more electrical vehicle charging stations than would be required. So you can set the base requirement anywhere you want to, whatever you deem as appropriate, whatever is defensible, legally defensible, you can set that base requirement there. If they voluntarily provide more than that, then this system gives them bonus points. They don't get bonus points for something they have to do anyway, I just want to underscore that point. But like I say, this is obviously subject to whatever changes you want to make to it, or elimination of it. In terms of the voluntary inclusionary zoning, well, how would that work? Bonus points for a pro, for providing the public benefits would be contingent upon providing affordable and/or ownership housing, in other words, that would be like a prerequisite, you have to provide a certain amount of affordable or ownership housing in your project. amount of affordable or ownership housing in your project before you'd even be eligible to get any bonus points. We could increase the number of points that are awarded in certain categories in recognition of the expense of providing affordable or ownership housing. I mean, it certainly isn't free to the developer, but at least the affordable isn't. And so, in acknowledgement of the fact that they're going to have to spend some money on this, we could allow them to get more bonus points for other things. Alternatively, the public benefits, the bonus point system could just be eliminated entirely, and the bonus could be entirely based on affordable and ownership housing. For rental projects, and this is going back to that mix of RENA numbers that I pointed out previously, staff believes that the required affordable housing, required for the bonus, that is, should be a mix of very low, low, and moderate income proportional to our RENA requirements, our RENA obligation. For ownership projects, staff would suggest that the affordable units should be moderate income, but it should be higher than the base inclusionary requirement of 20%. They have to provide 20% moderate income anyway in an ownership project. So, if they want a bonus, they should provide more than 20%. Also, ownership projects should have a requirement in the, what does this stand for, Conditions, Covenants, and Restrictions, I believe, CCNRs, for homeowner association. And those should stipulate that a certain percentage of the projects be owner-occupied. Alternatively, if you don't want to do that, if a condo project is operated as a rental project, in other words, they're technically condos, but the developer has retained ownership of all the units and is renting them out, then the rental affordability requirements should apply to those. And the developer could be given a choice of rental or ownership requirements. I just want to say a word about the state density bonus law, since this is something that is required by the state, and it's included in our planning regulations, although it's rarely used. This does provide for density bonuses for projects that provide at least 5% very low income, 10% low income, or 10% moderate income units in a common interest development. And the maximum bonus that's available is a 35% density bonus. So, in other words, if you're at 100 units per acre, you can have 135 units maximum. For providing 11% very low-income units, 20% low-income, or 40% moderate income. And there are a lot of different tables in the state density bonus law that say exactly what percent bonus you get for exactly what percent of affordable units in the various categories. Now, the city, under the state density bonus law, must provide 1, 2, or 3 unspecified incentives or concessions. And whether it's 1, 2, or 3 depends on the percent of affordable units that are provided. There are examples of what these incentives or concessions could be, but they don't have to be that. The developer can propose any incentives or concessions that they want to propose, and the city must grant those incentives or concessions unless the city makes specific findings as to why they can't grant those incentives or concessions. So, the developer, for example, could ask for an increase in FAR, or they could ask for an increase in height limit, or they could ask for a decrease in parking requirements, or a decrease in open space requirements, or an exemption from the family-friendly design guidelines, or whatever. They can ask for whatever incentives or concessions they want to ask for. And the city has to grant it unless we make specific findings. Staff would suggest that the developer be given a choice of either taking advantage of the state density bonus law, or the city's new voluntary inclusionary zoning, but not both, because it gets too confusing if you're trying to do both of them simultaneously. So, that's it. And for our discussion questions, should affordable housing and/or ownership housing be made a prerequisite for earning a development bonus? Should the base FAR, height, and residential density be lowered to require more projects to earn development bonuses? What's the appropriate mix of rental and ownership housing? Should all future projects be required to be ownership in order to earn the development bonuses and to sort of counter the trend towards rental housing we've had in the past? What percentage of the units at the various levels of affordability should be required for rental and ownership projects? Should this be proportional to the level of the bonus being requested? In other words, if a project needs 50% bonus points, should they be required to provide, say, half as many affordable units as a project that required 100 bonus points? And what other changes does the commission and council want to make to the development bonus system? So, those are our questions for you. And at this point, we'll have clarifying questions from the commission and council. Gail?
What control, if any, do we have over the situation where someone builds a large development, maps them for condos, and retains them as rentals?
I don't think we have any control over that. I mean, I think we just have to allow that.
Well, and I think we've even sort of encouraged that in the past, so that the units could be, you know, have the option to convert to ownership in the future.
Well, right. I mean, I think what you're saying is rental projects that have been proposed, we have encouraged to map as condos.
Yes.
Right.
But then they appear in your data as condo units that are...
Yeah, that are actually rented. Yeah, Oakwalk is, well, actually, they did propose condos at Oakwalk, and they built condos at Oakwalk, and then they operated it as a rental project. And there's other examples like that. Yes, Diane?
Is there a question about the state density bonus system, and what would be the pitfalls of a project that would fall under that bonus system, rather than the guidelines that we set forth for the things that we want in our community?
You know, I don't, I'm hard-pressed to answer that, because in my experience in Emeryville, we've never had one. I think when I worked in Oakland, we might have had one. But at a recent meeting of Alameda County Planning Directors, this issue came up, and we went around the table and queried each other, and it turns out that half the cities in the county had never used it, and other cities had used it maybe once or twice. So, for whatever reason, it doesn't seem to be a real popular tool.
Well, here's my fear, is that we're putting a lot of energy into developing a development bonus system that is going to get us what our community is asking for. And it seems to me, it might be rendered toothless if we, if there's the possibility of the state development bonus system being used.
Well, we don't have a choice there, though. We are required by state law to make the state density bonus system available. I think the key would be to craft our own so that it's more attractive.
That's, so I guess that's, that's my, that's the heart of my question. So, how do we, as we go into this process, I would love to be guided in the direction of creating a development bonus system that is effective for our community and getting what we need, and yet still attractive enough so that we don't go down that road?
I think one point is that our bonus system would allow a bonus, say, for density. In, you know, in all of these, the bonus, density bonus is virtually 100%. I mean, if you set the base at half of the bonus, you get 100% bonus, whereas the state density bonus law, the maximum bonus is 35%. So, our system would allow probably a greater level of density than the state density bonus law does.
Okay. I would just love to, confirmation of that, you know,
Sure.
Specifically stated, and thank you, thank you for clearing that, clarifying that for me.
Jack, I think you had your hand. Okay, Stephen?
Just a couple of questions on the slide 43, where it says that we can still require 20% inclusionary for condos. Could this be part of the reason why we don't get condos? Is that they are forced to do inclusionary, we're in the rental property, they don't?
Well, that's not my sense. I mean, the rental has to pay $20,000 per unit, so that's not nothing. My sense is more that the market right now just is not leaning towards condominiums. In the early 2000s, we got a lot of condominiums, because that's what the market was looking for. Right now, you hear this from all cities, that, you know, most places, it's mostly rental that's being developed right now, not condominiums. I hear that from all the other planning directors. So, it's not our inclusionary requirement, I don't think.
Okay. And then, under the voluntary inclusion zoning about controlling the CCNRs, that they can't reach a certain level of rentals, how do you manage that? How do you mandate that?
Well, you have to make it a condition of approval. I mean, we don't enforce CCNRs. That's a private thing. But we can, through our conditions of approval, indicate something has to be in your CCNRs.
And if they violate that, there's no, there's no way to find out that they're violating that, and there's no way to enforce it. Is that correct?
Well, it'd be a zoning violation. I mean, it would be handled the same as any other zoning violation. I mean, which is always tough.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't, if I could just add, I was going to clarify something on that anyway. So, I don't know that you could enforce CCNRs through code enforcement, but they are, I mean, they are, they are enforceable by the HOA. So, I don't think there are too many HOAs that wouldn't be interested in enforcing their own CCNRs.
But, oh, sorry.
Oh. But I was just going to add also, I wanted to clarify something that was sort of in the staff report, which was, relates to this, which is that, so for new developments, that's great. You know, we could require CCNRs to cap the number of rentals. For existing developments, the staff report touched on that a little bit, and said that there was a program to assist existing units to put these programs in place. But I wanted to say that in, I think it was in 2012, the state amended the Davis Sterling Act, which is the act that governs common interest development condominiums, to say that when HOAs impose rental restrictions, they only are valid on the units, on the units that are rented at the time that they're, or, I'm sorry, they're only rented on owners who purchased their units after those requirements are in place. So, it wouldn't affect any rentals right now. It would only affect future rentals.
Okay. Just on the CCNR issue, I mean, this is a legal issue that we need to explore further, but it's my understanding that if there's a, if the city requires that a provision be in CCNRs of a new project, we can enforce that. We don't want to get into the business of enforcing HOA CCNRs generally, but if there's a requirement in there that we made them put in there, we can enforce that that get done, I believe.
But the HOA can change their CCNRs after the fact.
Well, if they changed it to eliminate the provision that the city required, then they'd be in violation of their planning permit.
If they even knew what they were doing.
Well...
Okay. I have seen the benefits of some of these CCNRs, like, benefits from a community building viewpoint, like, for example, at our co-op, you can only sublet for one year. Two years, if you have artistic necessity. After that, no. You've got to, you know, sell it, get out of there, because we want people who are not subletting, we want actual participants, meaning, you know, you're going to be there, and you want to be in our community. So, we, that's been successful at the co-op. My mother's townhouse is a part of a CCNR agreement that has a similar effect. This is in the Chicago area. You go to rent, you can only rent to blood relatives, they say. Or, you have to sell. They don't want renters. And it's, lawyers are not challenging it. In Illinois, you know, they got enough lawyers there. I don't know. Looks, looks pretty good to me.
Right. Well, we don't want to get too deep into the issue of CCNRs and trying to regulate what private, you know, homeowner associations do. But this is just a suggestion in terms of controlling rental units. Any other questions?
Is it possible to change the affordable housing requirement for condominiums so that it matches the same requirements that apartments have? Therefore, there wouldn't be a penalty for putting a condominium map on a property, so that in sometime in the future, they could be sold as individual units?
Well...
There's a penalty now.
You mean, because it's 20%?
Yeah.
Well, but I don't know...
Excuse me. On a rental project, let me just clarify. So, on a rental project that seeks to have a map approved, the current regulations provide that we can allow that, but there would be an agreement that would require to be put in place between the city and the developer, that while it is being rent, even though it's subdivided into separate units, while it is being rented, it would be rented to, 6.9% of the units would be rented to low-income households as required. And then, when they went to go to convert those units and put them on the market to sell, then 20% of the units would then be sold at moderate. That's what the obligation is currently.
So, I think what you're saying is 20% sounds more onerous than 6.9%, but there's a much deeper subsidy by the developer for a very low-income unit than there is for a moderate-income unit. So, I don't know the exact numbers, but, you know, there are income restrictions and rental caps. Both, there are both rental caps, and there are purchase price caps for BMR units, below-market-rate units. And those caps are different at the different affordability levels, and for different unit sizes, and for different household sizes. So, 20, the theory is that 20% moderate is roughly equivalent to 6.9% very low, because of the difference in the subsidy that it involves. And for reasons that I, you know, previously said, we don't want to encourage low and very low-income ownership units, because those folks run into financial difficulty often. So, that's why we would have a different requirement for the two.
Well, if you just allowed them the $20,000 per unit fee in lieu of the 20%?
For the condos?
Yeah.
That's possible. Whoops. But we, I mean, it used to be, as I said, 9% moderate and 6% very low for rental, and 20% moderate for ownership. And the rental got taken away from us by the courts, so we replaced that with a fee, but we didn't change the ownership. We could have the fee applied to ownership as well.
For equal for both possibilities. Otherwise, I think we're discouraging ownership development.
Well, I would say, if we did impose the fee on ownership development, it would probably be similar to, for rental, it would be $20,000 per unit, or, in lieu, probably 20% moderate-income units. So, it'd be kind of...
Whatever. At least gives them the option.
Right. Okay.
And then, but it wouldn't encourage mixing, mixing incomes within the same development. You'd be encouraging financial, like, segregation.
Any further clarifying questions?
I have one, one question and one clarification that I wanted to make. So, the, I know the city attorney already reviewed everything, but I just wanted to confirm that it was, that was within state law to require an applicant to choose between the state density bonus and any other density bonus program.
We're going to need to confirm that.
I don't believe, I don't believe you can preclude an applicant from saying, "I want to take advantage of the state density bonus law." I think our challenge here is to recognize what the state density bonus law provides. And what it does provide essentially is, if they're going to take advantage of that, they have to provide the units as part of the development. And currently, we have a system that no longer, in our own system, doesn't allow us to make sure that those units are provided. We've had to create a system where, well, you got to pay money. And, great, it's great to collect $20,000 for a unit, but that doesn't come close to creating the amount of money that you actually need to develop these types of units. And so, what we're, I believe what the city is interested in is actually having the units provided. And so, I think the exercise that we're trying to, that we're going through, and something that we're trying to create, is a recognition that the state density bonus law has been around since, I think it was initially enacted in 1978, '79, and it's been amended over time. And I don't think it's ever been used in Emeryville. And, but yet, it's results, if it is used, it results in something that we want, which is units. And so, I think what we need to try to provide, and what we're here for, is try to create a system of our own that is perhaps more appealing to developers, so that they then take advantage of our system, rather than the state system, and therefore, we get the units provided, not collecting a bunch of money that doesn't come close to creating the units now. So...
But to say to them, "I want," so if an applicant said, "I want to use the city's bonus program,"
Correct.
Then we could say to them, "Then you can't use this..."
Yeah, I think we can, we can say that, but we can't say, "You, you can only use, you must use ours, not the state's."
No, no, no. But that was my question, is we have to choose.
Right. I mean, I think, I think if we create one, we say, "If you use this, this is what you use exclusively."
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That was, that was my question. And then I just, I just wanted to offer, as clarifying information, that in, in my day job, I've used the state density bonus twice, both in about the last five or six years, and both were for city-sponsored... years, and both were for city-sponsored, 100% affordable projects. So it's also my experience that market-rate developers don't use that bonus very often.
Right. Any further clarifying questions? Okay, let's go to public comment, then. Any public comments?
I'm Donna Briskin at 1500 Park. I'd just like to say that I really, we really support the concept that I was hearing this morning and is in the staff report, about requiring those things that are important to the city rather than giving them as bonus points. So in terms of the staff idea about should affordable housing and/or housing, ownership housing be made as a prerequisite, absolutely. We also like the idea of lowering the base, but I don't think, in my opinion, the city hasn't gone, the staff hasn't gone far enough, we think we ought to lower the bonus level to what the current base level is. So not just increasing the gap, but actually lowering what density FAR and height could be. And I say that because when we look at the base levels for density and height particularly, which is easier for me to understand, I can relate that those are appropriate levels of density and height, 55 feet feels very comfortable in Park Avenue, 75 feet, which is the current bonus level, seems very tall for our area. So just like you were talking this morning about, well, on what basis would we make the exception to family housing, it's hard for me to envision what things would be that important that we would take, we would allow a permanent building to go in that had that much more height that was out of scale with our neighborhood. So if we do keep the bonus levels, we would ask that you require everything you can legally require, rather than giving it through bonus, and that you use the bonus points very, in a very stingy manner, if you will, for only those things that have a long-term strategic effect for the city. Things like ownership housing, or like having a shared community space for the public, but not for things like charging stations and play equipment and that. Those, let those be driven, and energy efficiently, let those be driven by other regulations or by competitive forces.
See, I saw over here...
Tim Curran, I'm happy to follow those comments because they were very well said. The bonus system is a very easy menu to choose from for the developers, and the results have shown that we're not getting the projects that we seem to need. And if we change the bonus system to still provide a way that the developers can achieve what they want and kind of work the system, we'll expect them to do that. But if the new system puts in regulations or requirements that serve the public benefit in a very significant way, then the developers will have to abide by that, and I think that's very necessary, because as I look over the, the bonus points menu and see that you can achieve 100, 100 points very easily, picking two items off the menu and going forward with your plan, I get worried about the future of various developments that are coming down the pike. So I want to thank, thank you for those comments, because they were excellent.
Paul Germain, Emeryville Artist Cooperative, in agreement with almost everything, everything that Donna said, probably because we had a meeting before this. The old public benefit and bonus points has one little thing at the bottom that is deemed appropriate by the Planning Commission on the City Council. I would like to see this in whatever bonus point system is arrived at by the City Council and Planning Commission, and that is the flexible public benefit that can be negotiated between the city and the developer. For example, if there was a spot for the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts that was annually provided, for example, something like that, that could be negotiated, negotiated as a bonus point and, or even Center for the Art, which we no longer have a building for. Thank you.
I lived in Berkeley in a lovely home on a road that was one of three routes to the, get to the University of California. And the City Council in Berkeley, in its wisdom, developed an excellent traffic management plan, which diverted the traffic from two of those roads onto the road in front of my house. The fact that City Council people lived on those other two roads may have been a factor, I don't know. It actually was the logical place, in my opinion, but the point is, in the, in the, trying to create a public benefit in a better city, they've ruined our neighborhood. And that neighborhood today is occupied by non, people who have bought, Hong Kong residents have bought two-thirds of the houses, they don't live there, they're empty places to visit when you come. So when I think about these issues, I think about, how do you define "public"? Because I, I'm passionate about solar power, I'm passionate about charging stations, but is it appropriate to flood our neighborhood with traffic? Or create walls of too much, too great height shadowing over our building so that the world's a better place? And I think it's really, we have to try to find a balance between what is good for a specific neighborhood, what is good for a community, what is good for the world, and try to find those balances somehow. Because, and so much, so I love the idea of this discussion so far this morning, of saying, "There are things that we really want in this city." And those aren't bonus points, those are prerequisites. You want to build in this city, that's what you do, that's what our city wants. And you don't, you don't get to go above the normal guideline for height, or above the normal guideline for, for density, you just, that's, that's the way it is, that's a prerequisite. And so then, I, and I think lowering the base is a brilliant idea, it gives you much more discretion, much more influence on the direction you want to go. I would suggest, my personally, that the old levels of, the old base level would be a great new ceiling, not the current ceiling, because I think the current ceilings are too high, frankly, for some neighborhoods at least. And maybe along Powell Street, great height is, is okay, but there's certain neighborhoods where I don't think it's, it's appropriate. I think that the, the idea of including public space, that, that's an example of something that would benefit a specific neighborhood. It's, it's, it would, it would enhance the value of that neighborhood. There are other things like that that would be, that would, I think the neighborhood would appreciate having those things, and therefore, would give up some other things to have. But we want to have, I think that's, that's, that's the question, is think about the, a bonus system that is appropriate to a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Over here.
I am Jack Itzoni from 1500 Park Avenue also. I wanted to second what was said by Donna and the gentleman in front of her regarding sensitivity to heights and neighborhoods, because I think that the neighborhood that I'm in, the fundamental characteristic with the heights that seem to be permissible now would really change the neighborhood in a way that's not very desirable. And on major corridors, it's one thing, but that is a little pocket on the edge without a lot of ingress and egress for traffic. If you have a lot of density, you have a lot of height, you have a completely different neighborhood. And I think the people that currently live there would not like it to change in that way. And I think that sort of regional sensitivity needs to be part of the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, over here.
So, speaking to the discussion questions, just had comments on a few of them. The first question, making it a prerequisite, affordable housing, I think absolutely affordability should be required as a bonus. We lost the opportunity to include that in the Palmer case, but I think that, you know, the exception that was very much made clear in that decision was that you can bargain for the implementation of an inclusionary ordinance as part of handing out any entitlement or bonus, and I think that the only way to guarantee that we build as we go is to make that a necessity here. To the question about lowering base, I support lowering base for some of the reasons my neighbors have articulated. The suggestion, the caveat I would make to that, though, is not necessarily constricting the opportunities developers have. I think that when a planning commission has to consider what proposals before it, they want to have as much flexibility above it. What I would suggest instead is that the number of bonuses that are available to them and the types of them is restricted greatly from the current list we have. Almost half of these things, if not more of them, I think should actually be requirements that should be built into the planning guidelines as necessities to putting a proposal forward to that level. And I think that you can restructure some of the remaining things to reflect what you're actually trying to get at. You know, there's a couple other things in here that maybe aren't appropriate for right now, but I would just put on the table as things that should be considered. One of them is the impact fee itself. To be honest with you, $20,000 doesn't come close to the cost of putting in an affordable unit together if you're an affordable developer. They average about $110,000 to $120,000 a door, and it's probably more in Emeryville because of, we're above the mean on that. And so, you know, to the question that one planning commissioner, my friend Buzz, asked, you know, about whether we should try to mirror between condos and rental, I would actually discourage that suggestion here, because giving a developer, a for-profit developer a $20,000 out as opposed to mandating 20%, you know, 20% of those units at $120,000 each is a lot more significant than letting them pay $20,000 at the door for those units. So I would, I would actually not recommend that. And then just making sure we have other ordinances in place, I mean, we have, you know, I heard the city attorney say, and I appreciate that we, with the condo owner who rents the units, we require when they turn those over and convert them into ownership units, we have a contract with them, which is what we should have, obviously, and making sure those units remain affordable when they're sold. But for one that's not in that structure, where it's a full rental, it goes through maybe 10 years as a rental property and it converts over, we need ordinances that protect any units that are affordable to the right of first refusal, that basically ensure that those, it looks like the city attorney's going to tell me we have that.
We have a condo conversion ordinance that deals with those issues.
Awesome, I love that. That's it.
All right, any further public comments? Back here, Miro.
Good afternoon, Bruce Dorfman with the Sherwin-Williams Project. Someone brought up about, I guess, more regional issues, and I think I'd, I'd like to second a thought here, which is, Emeryville's in a unique position where for every six jobs, or five or six jobs that it has in the city, it has one housing unit. Right now, in the Bay Area, we're creating one housing unit for every six new jobs. There's really a issue here, and I'm just concerned that some of these elements that are being discussed are going to have the unintended consequences of forcing or encouraging new development that is lower density and consequently not meeting the bigger picture or the bigger needs that the city has. In the past, I think that the bonuses were on a discretionary basis, and, you know, we anticipated that that was going to be a negotiation with the City Council and the Planning Commission. It would seem that with the focus right now on certain specific issues, that perhaps it would be better for the community if it was more a formulaic approach, so that both the city and the developers knew specifically what they could design to in order to meet the direction that the city's providing. Thank you.
All right, any further public comment? Oh, all right, let's bring it back to the commission and council. Sean.
Charlie, excuse me, can I just, I just, couple, couple points. First, this dense, or the, the bonus system, as it's currently crafted, it applies not just to residential development, but it applies to commercial, industrial, et cetera. So I'm not sure if we are talking about just merely revising it as to residential development or whether you're anticipating that it gets revised for all types of development. So that's just sort of a, a question that you had to mull over. And then the other thing I just wanted to point out, and it's, it's in the staff report, that as we talk about, if, you know, if the direction is that we're going to look at lowering the base, one of the things we need to, to look at and analyze as part of that work product that we eventually come back to the commission and council with, is making sure that our housing element that is developed to meet our RENA numbers, that we're not undermining our ability to do that by making these revisions. So there needs to be an analysis of the effect of what we're proposing on the housing element. So, okay.
We finished with public comments, we're back to the commission now. Does the commission wish to entertain, and council wish to entertain any further public comment?
Is there...
He already spoke.
No questions.
Want to speak for one more minute?
Yeah, you can speak.
Yes?
Charlie, this is a math question. If, if the, if the requirement is $20,000 per unit in lieu of affordable and that were applied to a 20% requirement for affordable housing, would that translate, wouldn't, wouldn't that translate into about $100,000 equivalent for a, a new unit? In other words, is that the math that John, if it's $120,000 to produce a new unit and 20% of a project was going to have to be affordable, therefore, do you multiply the, do you divide five into the 120 and get the...
Maybe $20,000.
Maybe, maybe you all can have a private conversation after the meeting. I think you're kind of mixing up a couple of different concepts.
That's why.
Yeah, okay. Okay, back to the council and commission. Sean.
So I have a lot of comments on this portion of the presentation, so I wanted to kind of jump out in front.
Oops, your time's up, sorry. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Mike. You're a very good guy.
I have several comments, which I hope will provide some insight and kind of frame the discussion. At first, I want to make some general comments, which is that I just want to point out, you know, as I do at every opportunity, that we did, as, and as the staff, that we did have a really good tool for providing affordable housing in redevelopment areas, and now that is gone, and the state has not replaced it, and so now a lot of communities are struggling with how to replace those funds, and it's a very unfortunate situation that we're in. I was sort of struck by the table that showed the, the RENA numbers and the, the housing production in the Bay Area, and I was actually really surprised by the above-moderate category that shows that Emeryville has provided more than its RENA share, but that the region has not, has provided less than 100% of the, of the RENA allocation, which means one of two things to me. It means either the RENA allocation is not accurately reflecting the demand for those units, or it means that, that we're not permitting units to meet the demand. And that speaks to the report that Commissioner Keller sent us from the Legislative Analyst's Office, which does speak to really the regional problem that we have, and that, that is another unfortunate thing, I think. Then I also wanted to talk just briefly about renter-occupied condo units. It's been my observation that, so I think condo buildings and apartment buildings are built with different sets of amenities and different sets of programs and things like that. I think we do have some interest in ensuring that condo buildings remain ownership and perhaps even rental buildings remain rental. For example, condo buildings are typically built without a means of providing onsite management all of the time, especially in smaller buildings, without a lot of the same amenities that are provided in apartment buildings. And so when individual condo units are rented out, you know, without things like onsite management and things like that, it, it can create a lot of problems. So I just wanted to say that. So now, I'll kind of get to some of my, my more specific comments. So I wanted to talk a little bit about... So I wanted to talk a little bit about overall, kind of this changing of the bonus scheme. I will say in general, even as a planner, I've always not loved floor area ratio as a metric. It's a really hard one sometimes to get your head around, and I think at times, it doesn't always provide us with the kind of development that we want. So you might say, you know, the goal is to provide kind of open space on a site. While the floor area ratio doesn't, it doesn't say what that, what that space that's not occupied by a building has to be. So it could be, you know, it could be a street, or it could be a parking lot, or it could be landscaping, or it could be a lawn, or it could be hardscape, or it could be a variety of things. To me, you know, density and height are the metrics that I can definitely get my head around more. So I, I've not really reconciled the relationship between the height especially and the floor area ratio, and whether those, whether those are in sync now, and whether they will be, would be in sync with the proposed changes to them. So I'm mostly going to comment on height because that's something I can sort of get my head around. So then, I will also say, the conversation of lowering the, basically the base, what's allowed, the base level and the bonus, is sort of one that starts to make me uncomfortable. I think in, you know, kind of the history of zoning, we've, you know, usually you zone for what you want. So you allow the maximum that you want, you know, you allow the minimum that you want, you allow, you know, all these different things. What this is saying, so the term that is used a lot these days, it's kind of a buzzword, is land value recapture. So what we're trying, what we're trying to say now is we, we are creating increased land value by raising the allowed height and do, you know, doing all of these things to allow more intense development. How do we recapture that, some of that value that we're adding to the, to the property? Which on the surface seems to make sense, except that you're now creating this threshold for a bonus, which is a barrier, which is an obstacle. So the risk you run is that your projects are not going to want to cross that threshold. It's more likely, I mean, this has always been a risk, you know, always with sort of Euclidean zoning, you establish a maximum, you know, maximum density, whatever. And there's always the risk that you might, you know, if that maximum density is what you get, that you might, is what you want, that you might get something less than that. And that's still the risk, but now we're creating this extra hurdle, so, you know, we're going to bump right up until that line of where you need a bonus, and it's more likely that projects are not going to jump over that hurdle. And so we're going to get something that's less than what we ultimately want, is my concern. And so then, I will say also, we need to be thinking about the limitations in terms of construction type. I think that's one key piece of information that's missing here, and I, my expertise will allow me to, will allow me to kind of fill in some of that, but if anybody else has any, you know, can add anything else, please do. But basically, so right now, what we're getting obviously is a lot of wood frame construction over reinforced concrete, bottom base podium, if you will. And there's some debate in, you know, amongst different cities as to what the, kind of the maximum for that is that's allowed right now. The building code isn't completely, the current building, California building code is not completely explicit on it. So my understanding is Emeryville's building officials interpretation is a two-story podium is basically five stories of wood frame over a two-story podium, which by my calculation would be, is about 80 feet. You know, you get about 224 feet for the podium, 55 feet for the wood frame, about 80 feet. So housing is going to be constructed, I think Jennifer West was here earlier, but I think she left. She and I went to a great seminar, I forget who put it on, a few years ago, and one of the speakers talked about how developers construct parking, and housing is constructed mostly the same way. So if I can kind of give an illustration, parking is constructed not by, not by number of spaces, but by levels, if you're constructing it in a, in structured parking. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't add half of, half a level of parking, you would add a full level of parking because of the cost benefit of doing that. So housing construction is going to happen much the same way, where you're going to, you know, you're going to add an entire floor to your building. So I think we need to be thinking about this, and as I looked at the heights, they kind of made sense to me. 40 feet, I think, I think I calculated 40 feet was about like three stories of wood frame over a one-story podium, which now, you know, in this current market, seems to be not a very desirable model. So I think we, in that case, we would get a bonus. But what I also wanted to say is that we need to be thinking about the affordable housing requirement in terms of that as well. For example, if you had a building that had, say, you know, 20 units on each floor, and by, and you bumped right up against that bonus threshold, and then by adding the bonus and adding the extra height, you were then required to build 20 more units, most developers are not going to build an extra floor of building that has to be all affordable housing units, right? It only makes sense to do that if you get a bonus beyond what, you know, the affordable housing that would be then required by the bonus. So I just kind of wanted to frame things in terms of that.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Nora, then Scott.
I have a question, Charlie. On this public benefits and bonus point, if we go down through this list, which of these could be transferred into the regular permitting progress process before the planning commission? What I have heard from the public and from other members of the council is that this is an obsolete bonus point. Some of these things on here, we should be requiring as a condition of approval. And my question to you is, if you go down this list, which of these could you do that with without a problem? Legal problem?
Well, as I tried to emphasize at the outset, and this point doesn't seem to be getting across, this is over and above what is normally required. You only get bonus points if you do more than what the city already requires. So some of these things are already required, like public art. We have a 0.5 percent for art requirement for residential and 1 percent for art for non-residential projects. You only get bonus points in public art if you provide more than that, say 2 percent or 3 percent. And EV charging stations are also required. You only get bonus points if you provide more than what's required. Significant structures, we have a system in place that says you've got to get city council approval to demolish a significant structure. This gives you bonus points for incorporating it into your project, but we could eliminate that on the knowledge that if you don't incorporate it in your project, the city council has to approve its demolition. So I would say, we'd have to go through it case by case. I would say about half of these, maybe not half, maybe a third of these are already required. It's just, they get bonus points if they go above that requirement.
To what extent? If your, if your, a level is so low that they can come in and get bonus points, let me give you the electric charging station as a basic point. If you're only requiring two or three in a big development, that shouldn't be the rubric. It should be on the percentage of parking space.
It is, 3 percent.
But is that high enough?
Well, that's based on state guidelines, and that's where we got it from. We could increase these requirements. I mean, we could eliminate all of these bonus categories and take a look at what our base requirement for all of these things is, and make sure those are appropriate, if that's what you want to do.
I misunderstood what I heard from planning commissioners and council members, but I thought that was the direction that we wanted to move in, that these are relative, some of these bonus points are obsolete in the context of what we want to do now and what we're going for.
Well, right. I mean, if the main focus is going to be on family-friendly, affordable, and/or ownership housing, and that's all you want to give bonuses for, then maybe we just eliminate all of these.
Well, the thing here is, we again have to separate out, we're just talking about affordable housing, family-friendly housing here. This also includes commercial.
Correct.
That's a separate issue here.
Correct. I mean, we do have a housing impact fee for commercial development. We could tailor it so that development bonuses for non-residential development require an additional affordable housing fee or something, I would think, if we wanted to do that. Just a thought. Yes, Brad?
And this is just responding to the, I mean, I sort of went through it, and I, it seemed to me that about half of the items here either are already requirements, or they could easily be requirements, at least to a certain threshold, you know, or base level.
Right.
Everything from, I mean, I would encourage us to have a requirement of lead silver, you know, be maybe a 15 percent energy, you know, for the Title 24.
Well, one thing I would say about the energy efficiency, this is challenging because it's a moving target. You know, the state, state building code keeps upping the ante on energy efficiency to the point where pretty soon, you're not going to be able to get any bonus points regardless of what our system says because it's already required by the state.
Or even if you do lead silver, I think they might, that might require, or at least, you know, one of the ways most, many people, you know, one of the points that a lot of people go for in that is the 15 percent above the requirement for the energy efficiency.
Let me just give you one example. Now, we have, and again, I also want to underscore that we have had very few projects approved under this system so far. So we don't have a really good database of experience to draw on here in terms of what developers are going to choose to use, but the utility undergrounding is something that, to me, has great benefit to the city, to get those wires out of the air. But legally, we cannot require a developer to underground the utilities except right in front of their property, except along their building frontage. If a developer voluntarily says, "I'll underground the whole street," you know, "or I'll underground two blocks on either side of my project," we can't require that. If they choose to do it, we can say, "Oh, all right, you get some bonus points." I mean, that, to me, that's a pretty clear example of where this would come in. If you take that category away, then they're never going to offer to do that. I don't, haven't heard anybody offering to do that anyway, so, because it's, it's very expensive, so maybe it's not such a loss.
Well, and that one is only, I mean, the way I read it is it's provided into a fund, so that would only be...
Oh, is that what it says?
Yeah, so that would only work if we got a few projects that provided enough to actually underground somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
If utility undergrounding is a condition of approval, we're talking about, we're not talking about little residential lots, we're talking about big parcels. And if you, if you underground, say, Hollis Street from South Street down to where that property stops at Stanford, that's a big deal. They have to underground everything on the...
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying it isn't.
And that should be a condition of approval.
It is, it is. It is, no, it is. If they do it in front of their own project as a condition of approval, they don't get any bonus points for that. It's only if they would voluntarily do it beyond that. So for example, the Glass House project, there's no wires on Hollis Street in front of the Glass House project, but there are north and there are south. If they had volunteered to underground down to, you know, Ocean Avenue or 62nd Street or something, they should get some credit for that because we cannot require that.
I think it's worth it for us to go through each of these categories so we know what's required and what, where the threshold over, because it's clear we don't have a common understanding of each of these things, and then we can weigh in on that.
Can the planning commission do that and send their recommendations to the council? We've got 10 minutes.
Well, maybe that's, that's one way to go, but I do think, I, no, I have a lot to say about how to tweak our density bonus system. And just Brad, off of your lead silver thing, you know, we, the city council recently heard a status report on our climate action plan, and we're not getting the overall reductions that we need to meet our climate action goals. So I think sustainable design and alternative energy can be consolidated, like if a building has a zero carbon footprint, they get a, because not every building, they get, they get bonus points for being carbon neutral. And anything short of being carbon neutral, it's like, well, they should just be efficient anyway. But I don't know, we could get really bogged down just on this bonus system and not talk about some of these other issues about affordability and ownership.
Okay, Jack?
I just want to co-sign onto what Ruth is saying. I think that, and Nora too.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
And Nora too, right, that maybe the planning commission could go, go through this, but also I'd like to say that right now, the menu, people look at it in context, right? And so they will pick the thing that has the lowest barriers or is the cheapest to do, and it's too, it's like a menu from the Cheesecake Factory. Too, too many possibilities, too many things here, and they weigh one against the other. So as the planning commission looks at this, I would really like to see it targeted, right, and very, a very slim menu of options.
I would just anecdotally note that when we were developing this bonus system a couple of years ago, as some of you will recall, people were throwing in all kinds of things that they wanted. They're like, "Okay, we'll add that one."
That's right, that's right. Great.
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going in the same direction. This could, this could be a really, really lengthy discussion, and I think we have a parallel track that we're here for about the affordability, the ownership, and the mix of those prerequisites or requirements.
Can you throw up those questions?
I'm sorry, sure.
If you could just weigh in on that. Thank you. Who wants to take a crack at the questions here?
Scott.
Should affordable housing and/or ownership housing be made a prerequisite for earning development bonus? Yes.
All right.
Should the base...
That's a good idea. Anybody, anybody else agree with that? Looks like all hands up, okay.
Should the base far height and residential density be lowered to require more projects to earn development bonuses? Yes.
I do have a qualifier on that one. You mentioned adding bonuses to where, where there are not currently bonuses, is the residential, single-family sort of area. I don't remember the exact zoning, but I, I mean, I witnessed a 3,000 square foot house being built on a 3,000 square foot lot, which is a floor area ratio of one, because I think they got bonuses before the bonuses were taken away from that, or I'm not quite sure, but it fills up the entire lot and it's an eyesore for the neighbors adjacent to it. So I don't, I think a 0.5 in a single-family residential area is not overly, you know, is not overly restrictive. I don't know.
Well, it's just that it doesn't match the residential density bonus. I mean, we could take away the residential density bonus, so you don't have the option of going to 35 units per acre, but I would also note that hopefully, some of these atrocities wouldn't happen in the future because, first of all, the bonus up to 1.0 would be discretionary. It would have to be approved by the planning commission, they'd have to like the design in order to approve it, and we do have design guidelines, not just the family-friendly, but we have a whole slew of other design guidelines that talk about how buildings have to look and shape and relate to the street and relate to each other and all that sort of thing. So if they comply with the design guidelines and the planning commission likes the project, they can decide whether or not they want to give them the 1.0 density bonus, or you could just not have it at all.
And I just have a question on that. Do we have a area in town that's zoned single resident only?
No.
So only these places could have a granny flat or triplex or...
Oh, yeah. We're talking about the Triangle neighborhood here and the Doyle Street neighborhood here primarily. And in those districts, the... And in those districts, the base density is 20 units per acre, which in some communities is their highest density neighborhoods. And two units per lot are allowed by right. And then above that, you need to get, you know, some kind of permit. So, right. Was that it from those, your comments? So Scott, did you want to keep going?
I want to keep going. I want to drop down to the last one first, which is what other changes to development bonus point system are desired? Well, this relates to what Brad was talking about earlier, that in larger developments, when you get up to more than 150 people, there'd be a different section of the building requiring some kind of separate access, so that we're in effect creating 150 people or less sections within large developments, something like this. You know, maybe this idea has to be worked on, but that that would be a bonus, some number of bonus points for creating sub-communities within larger developments that would go towards family-friendly design.
On that point, Catherine was just reminding me that the guidelines document, I guess it was, was it the one that was prepared by staff for the EAH development, or whatever that is, that that includes a provision like that, to break projects, big projects up into smaller projects? And I guess that was originally included in our family-friendly design guidelines and got eliminated for some reason?
So the research that was done, that we did a few years ago about, on affordable housing projects, was talking about creating community within larger, smaller communities within larger projects, and the idea, the concept is actually around security about, so only certain people have access to certain areas, and then those areas have some sort of communal space, some sort of space that is only accessed by that smaller community. There's research on this, and we'll review that research on how that, how, how to best create community in a multifamily, smaller communities and multifamily.
We do, I believe the guidelines still have that provision about access in, in, you know, certain restricted areas.
There is a, there's a provision that says in large projects, consider dividing them into parts that have exclusive access to the common areas of those residents. And we were focused on security, so what, in the way we wrote that. But it sounds like what Brad was talking about was more how the project is designed, so that there's a bunch of units that face on a courtyard.
In the interest of 30 seconds we've just gone over, I'll call it, community, sub-community, unit subdivision.
Yeah, okay.
Bonus points, yes.
Take that as suburban.
Okay.
And just, I mean, the overall concept, it sounds like we're all on the same page that this needs to be, I mean, this is hours of, of discussion with regard to revamping the bonus point system, but...
Sounds like the council wants to defer to the commission for those hours of discussions. Do you want to tackle the issues of mix of rental and ownership and the various affordability levels?
Not, I, I don't want to tackle that right now.
I don't know how we tackle it in this amount of time.
Anybody else?
I think we really do need to try to get the distribution of the low, very low, moderate, all of those things in a better balance, because clearly we're doing well in some areas and failing miserably in others.
Okay. That's a good point.
I mean, the voluntary inclusionary zoning seems very promising, so...
Okay.
But only if it's attractive, right? I mean, only, only if people want to opt in.
Well, it will take some further thought to figure this out, to craft it.
That's voluntary part.
Yeah, right. No, that's, that's, yeah.
You'll notice this section was not as well, I don't want to say as well thought out, but wasn't as finely tuned as the first section was really, which was really just numbers, you know? Which number do you want to pick?
It's much more fantastic.
Yes, yeah.
You did good, Charlie.
Thanks. Any further comments from the commissioner and council?
One of the things is, in terms of an ownership project that should come online, that would be governed by CCNRs. I, I know that there are some HOAs that are revamping their CCNRs now to require when units sell, that they be owner-occupied for at least five years. And I used to live in an HOA condo complex here in town, where the percentage of renters just kept creeping up to the point where it affected mortgages and the lending environment for these condo complexes. So I think we can say, at least at the start, that when CCNRs are created, they provide a residency, initial residency requirement. And then if an owner later on down the line wants to move and rent out their unit, they would be prohibited, but at least at, at the point of sale and for the short-term future, it would be owner-occupied.
You're here.
We can also cap what the rental amount could be, as well as, so, yeah, so you have five years it has to be owner-occupied. After that, 50% of the unit still has to be owner-occupied, or owner-occupied during the duration of the project.
Well, you can't control that.
You could put it in the CCNRs.
Yeah, but who are you going to prohibit from moving?
It's like, I want the first 50% of the standard.
That's the option.
Getting into a bag of worms. Do you really want to do that?
Okay, I sense a desire to get out of here. So, let me, let me just quickly mention next steps. So next Wednesday at 6:00 PM, the housing committee will be taking this issue up, they're getting the same report that you all got today. I doubt they're going to spend four hours on it, I certainly hope not. The city council will be considering the family-friendly design guidelines at your meeting on May 19th. Then we will be trying to flesh all of this out, that you've given us direction on today. Planning commission consideration of the revised planning regulations and general plan amendments will be happening hopefully in May or June, and council consideration then would follow in June or July, and those amendments would take effect 30 days after final passage by the council. Okay? So, thank you. Thank you.
With that, I, I want to thank the public for coming out, and for those of you stuck through to the end of a four-hour meeting on a, on a Saturday. And I'm glad to see our postcards work, that, that when we notify people of this. But we don't get together as a collective body very often, and it's very valuable when the commission and the city council do meet. I want to thank the staff for extensive, extensive preparation. I want to thank...
Grab, grab a sandwich on your way out.
I also want to, I also want to make note that we made this meeting more accessible by having childcare, and it was used. And that is a little bit of modeling what we need, want by way of a family-friendly community. So with that, this was a great discussion, and, and let's get together some other time. Meeting's adjourned.